Okay, it is 5:45. I'm gonna call our meeting to order. It is November 10th, 2020. And before we begin, I'd like to read, "As Chair of the School Board, it is my privilege to welcome you to this meeting of the School Board of Manatee County. Your presence and participation are an essential element and valuable part of the School Board meetings, workshops, and public hearings. To assist the School Board in conducting the public's business in an orderly manner, we ask that you please adhere to the following School Board meeting protocols: Please silence your cellphone and other electronic devices upon entering the School Board chamber." That goes for the Board members as well. Please respect your fellow citizens and the School Board by keeping conversation to a quiet minimum during the meeting. Please refrain from clapping, booing, and speaking out from the audience or engaging in any other behavior that is disruptive to the business at hand. And finally, our Board policy requires that all individuals in our buildings wear a mask, so I please ask that everyone please keep your masks on. Again, thank you for your presence and for following the above protocols. And with that, I would like to begin with our Pledge of Allegiance, so if everybody can please stand.
My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And we're gonna begin first with our student celebration. Mr. Barber, come on down.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Saunders. Isn't it great to see students in our boardroom? It's always great to have them. And this is a very special privilege because the students that are here tonight and their teachers have all won collectively and individually statewide awards at a competition that they'll tell you about a little bit here. But we're very proud to have them here tonight and very proud to recognize them. So to get us started, I'd like to introduce the media specialist and video production instructor at Lee Middle School, and that's Terry Roddy. So Terry.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about the Jim Harbin Student Media Festival. It's a statewide student media festival that honors excellence in student media producers. The students can either work alone or in a group to produce a film, every aspect of that film, from the original idea all the way to the final presentation. To make it to the state competition, that film has to first place in the top three of the district and regional competition. This year, we had three middle school films that placed not only in the top three of the district and regional competitions, but also in the top three of the state competition. Tonight, we honor those filmmakers who are responsible for those three award-winning films. Due to time constraints, we will only be sharing 30-second clips of the two films that lasted longer than one minute. I'd now like to introduce you to Maria Freer from Nolan Middle School.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. My students, I would like to introduce them. They placed third place in the comedy category with the film The Survival Trials. The students are Samantha Belair, Riley Malin, Brianna Packard, Shalini Rader, and Addison Shea. And it's not here without Melissa Bell. She's also part of the group, but she's not here tonight.
Now we have a clip from their award-winning film.
Let's check out how our contestants are doing. Amanda?
I love hugging and kissing nature.
Oh my god, an animal! I hate nature!
I'm coming for you all! Look out, Woods! Meet your newest contender, the Hailey!
I don't see it yet, but I'm confident that I will make it.
Did I make it first?
Becca did.
I passed one round! Yay!
And that means Rachel is eliminated.
What? No!
Now I'd like to introduce my student, Lily Torres. She worked alone on the winner, first-place winner, in the documentary category for the state of Florida called Digging Deeper. And this is her clip.
I'm from Connecticut. I grew up there, but I also live there now. I am a graduate student at Yale University. But when I do my research, I live in either Canada or Scotland, depending on the project. So anthropologists study human cultures. They study meaning, what it's like to be a person in living in different places and environments. Very abstract, but I think very fun and important.
And now I'd like to introduce my student, Aronsa Martin. She placed first in the category of public service video. Her video is called A Message to the Humans. You will be seeing it in its entirety because it's only 52 seconds. Now Superintendent Saunders is going to present them with their trophies.
I would like to present this to our students of Nolan. What a tremendous job and your teachers, so thank you guys. Congratulations. Would you want to take pictures?
We're gonna get pictures.
When they're all there? Great. Of course, this is one of your treasures, so congratulations. An outstanding job for you.
Thank you.
In first place, it just doesn't get any better than that. Congratulations, and I know your teacher's very thrilled.
If you'll step up there and turn around this way and miss owners, you can stay down here and get a picture with the board and the pepper.
All right, perfect.
By the way, parents here, if you stand up to...
Beautiful, he can't see.
Thank you for coming tonight and congratulations.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can come back next year with more winners.
Okay. Thank you. This next recognition is a very special one and one that really makes us all stop and think about the events that made this recognition possible. But to tell us more and to tell us a little bit about what this recognition is about, I'd like to introduce our Executive Director of Curriculum and Professional Learning, Dr. Shereen Gibson.
Good evening, Board Chair Messenger, Board Members, Superintendent Saunders. I'm here with Katie Wald, our Social Studies Specialist, who is instrumental in this partnership that we have this evening. The Florida Department of Education commemorates November 9th through the 13th, 2020, as Holocaust Education Week, with November 9th and 10th marking the anniversary of Kristallnacht. Therefore, today, in recognition of the Holocaust Education Week and the acknowledgement of the importance of this topic across our district and the state as a whole, we gather to express our gratitude for the partnerships between our local organizations, individuals, and our district. These partnerships remain of vital importance to ensuring that students and teachers receive the necessary support to explore this topic within an academic setting and the tireless efforts of those individuals celebrated today who have undoubtedly had an incredible impact. Focused on providing professional development and opportunities and instructional resources to our teachers, the following individuals and their organizations have dedicated countless hours to supporting instruction on the Holocaust and anti-Semitism, thoroughly enhancing the way in which our students learn about these topics. I introduce to you Betty Zaret, founder of the Butterflies of Hope and Remembrance Project; Jesse Cheslow, Director of Community Relations of the Jewish Federation of Sarasota and Manatee; and Kelsey Jagno, Museum Outreach Educator for the Florida Holocaust Museum. We thank you all for your continued dedication to our students and teachers, and would like each of you to say a few words. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, Dr. Gibson. Thank you, Board, for having us here. I am Kelsey Jagno. I'm the Museum Outreach Educator at the Florida Holocaust Museum. The mission of the Florida Holocaust Museum is to remember the millions of innocent men, women, and children, the lives that were taken by the Nazi regime and their collaborators between the years of 1933 and 1945. And the second tier of our mission is to extend education outwardly to students and education leaders, to help them to teach the inherent human worth and dignity of all life through lessons of the Holocaust. And we have had such a wonderful partnership with Manatee County, and I can't thank Katie enough for fostering that partnership, and Tiffany Hoben, who is not with us here tonight, but who really cultivated that partnership with us. So we appreciate the continued dedication of Manatee County and the recognition from the School Board from the top level for Holocaust Education Week. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for this incredible recognition. And thank you, Dr. Gibson, and thank you, Katie, so much for your support. We really could not do this without you, and we consider you true partners. I am Betty Zaret, and I am the founder and chair of the Butterflies of Hope and Remembrance Project, which was really meant as a communication umbrella to commemorate the 75th anniversary of the end of World War II and the liberation of the Nazi concentration and death camps. And through educational programming and special events, working with the different school systems, with the museum, and with the Jewish Federation of Sarasota, Manatee, we were able to really impact and reach many, many children and many adults to teach them not only about the Holocaust, but to also try and foster the critical thinking that is needed to be able to discern between fact and fiction and to really help encourage everyone to stand up and resist all forms of hate and bigotry. So it's our goal to, long-term, be able to really have an impact in the community so that we can all live in a safer and more collaborative, more tolerant, and peaceful community. So I'm, thank you so much for this. I think this is just the beginning, and we look forward to working with you going forward. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Cheslow. I am the Director of Community Relations at the Jewish Federation of Sarasota, Manatee. Superintendent Todd Saunders, distinguished Board Members, thank you so much for giving us the honor of standing here on such an important topic as Holocaust education. On this, the day after we commemorated the Night of Broken Glass, or better known as Kristallnacht, we are reminded why educating our youth about the Holocaust is so vital. From the Holocaust, we learn about the power of government, the power of upstanders, the power of the human spirit, and the power of learning from mistakes of our past so we are not doomed to repeat them. On behalf of the Jewish Federation of Sarasota, Manatee, thank you for this honor. We are proud to partner with the Manatee County School District in Holocaust education, and we look forward to a bright future. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Holocaust Education Week in Florida, whereas the Holocaust was the state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jews by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945, in which 6 million Jews were murdered. And whereas, we also commemorate other victims of the Nazi regime who suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas, the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments. And whereas, we should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny, and actively redirect ourselves to the principles of individual freedom in a just society. And whereas, Holocaust Education Week, as part of Florida's educational instruction of historical events, provides Floridians with a valuable opportunity to remember the victims of the Holocaust, as well as to reflect on the need to respect all peoples. And whereas, Holocaust Education Week in Florida is an opportunity to honor the memory of the victims and survivors of the Holocaust, as well as the rescuers and liberators, and further proclaim that we should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the School Board of Manatee County that the week of November 9th through 13th, 2020, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Holocaust Education Week, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 10th day of November, 2020. School Board of Manatee County, Florida. Thank you.
First is approval of the agenda, Mr. Barber. Okay. Okay. The Chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the November 10th, 2020 Agenda, updated November 6, 2020, and posted to the district website manateeschools.net. Do I have a motion?
A move by Minor.
Got a motion by Mr. Minor and a second from Vice Chair Kennedy. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none. I just want to remind the Board that we have a time certain set for our public hearing about our policy. So at any point when we hit that time certain at 6:30, we will kind of press pause on what we're doing and move to the public hearing. And then when we're completed the public hearing, and I guess completed our, I would say, the section about the policy, then we'll resume back to where we were in the agenda just so that we ensure, you know, we set a time certain for families so that they could have the time to be here and know that it is for the parents and the families and the community to come in and speak on that specific item. So I just wanted to make everyone aware, we have a time certain set for 6:30. It is now 6:06, so we will just hit a pause whenever we hit 6:30. With that, we've had a motion and a second. Hearing no for the discussion. We will vote. Is your computer working? Okay, then we will voice vote this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. We will move forward to reports and presentations. First is Farm City Week.
Thank you very much. I hope I don't steal your thunder at all, but I've got great news and a little bit of sad news. Great news is it's Farm City Week again. Sad news is our old friend, Ralph Garrison, the man in the tall white hat, couldn't be here tonight. He wasn't feeling well. So for the first time in anyone's memory around here, we're missing him. But we hope he's feeling better, and we hope he is back to see us soon. But to tell us a little bit more about Farm City Week and what it means to Manatee County, I'd like to introduce our Executive Director of Adult Career and Technical Education, Dr. Paul Gansmer.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Saunders and staff. I'm here with Kelly Kennedy, our Assistant Director for CTE, as well as teachers, parents, and students from Parish Community High School and Hale Middle School. We have the great pleasure of standing before you tonight to receive the 2020 Farm City Week proclamation and to celebrate the student awards. Farm City Week was conceived by Quanis International more than 60 years ago to promote the interaction between city folk and the farming and ranching community. This year, we celebrate Manatee Farm City Week with the theme Original Essential Workers: Ag is Here to Stay. While there are many people and commodities that could be highlighted as being instrumental in creating the foundation for the rich agricultural environment that we enjoy in Manatee County today, this year, the committee chose to highlight our local agricultural worker. The unique circumstances we find ourselves in over the last eight months is vastly different than anything we have experienced in our lifetime. And we believe we have a greater appreciation for teachers, healthcare workers, truck drivers, and those in food service, just to name a few. The Farm City Week Committee wanted to take this time to add our local agriculture workers to that list. Whether they are farmers, ranchers, laborers, fishermen, extension agents, or backyard gardeners who sell produce to the farmer's market, they have had to work differently to ensure that our tables were not bare and our stomachs stayed full. At this time, I'd like to introduce Kelly Kennedy, our Assistant Director for Career and Technical Education. Kelly?
Thank you, Dr. Gansmer. Good evening, everyone. While I don't have to tell you the importance of agriculture to this community, you know I will. Manatee County enjoys a rich agricultural history, and this year, the school district is adding to that history with the addition of an ag program at Braden River Middle School. We currently teach ag at five high schools and six middle schools, and we hope to add to that number next year. It is rare to find a district where agriculture programs are being added, but Manatee County is the exception. We are also exceptional when it comes to the contribution this county makes to the marketability of agriculture. The market value of agricultural production in Manatee County is ranked second in the state, and of the 753 farms, more than 90% are family-owned. Agriculture is always evolving, growing, changing, and adapting, and it will continue to even after this pandemic is over. We will continue to innovate, automate, and grow more food on less land than ever before. We must, because it is the world's agricultural workers that will be tasked with feeding 1 billion more inhabitants of this planet in just the next 10 years. Normally, I would tell you about all the events planned for the coming week, and days and weeks related to Farm City Week, but alas, COVID. In celebration of Farm City Week, our students have written essays, our winners are here tonight, and given speeches. Next week, we will honor the New Agriculturalist of the Year and induct a new member into the Manatee County Ag Hall of Fame in a virtual Kiwanis luncheon. Our typical farm tours will be virtual as well, and AgVenture, my very favorite event, our third-grade event, is going hybrid after the first of the year with some class activities paired with some virtual instruction. The Farm City Week essay contest is conducted in our middle and high school agriculture programs. Teachers choose their top five essays, and they are forwarded to the essay committee where they are checked for spelling, punctuation, and accuracy. And the top three middle and high school essays are chosen. Tonight, we are pleased to introduce to you the middle school Farm City Week essay winner, Hannah Lewis.
And we have a plaque and a card for Hannah. And she is representing Hale Middle, the Hale Middle School FFA chapter. Also, Avery Banful won second place, and Sienna Lee won third place, and they are all from Hale. In the audience tonight is Jess Jones, their ag teacher. Jess, you want to stand up? Also, parents, if you're here, go ahead and stand up. Additionally, Brooke Bell from Parish Community High School won the high school division, and Michaela Barton won second, Samantha Media won third, both from Braden River High School. In the audience tonight is Susan Granger, our first-place winner, high school winners' ag teacher, and also, okay. Thank you so much for the opportunity to receive the proclamation for Farm City Week. Although it looks very different than our activities typically look, we've continued to persevere and continued to do everything possible to educate the students and the community about the importance of agriculture in Manatee County. So thank you so much, and we want to give our...
Congratulations. You will turn around right here. This gentleman is a wonderful person. Come on up. Congratulations, man. Awesome job.
And ag teachers, if you guys want to come up so we can get a group picture with everyone?
Mr. Wilder, why don't you come up here? This is your backyard. This is your backyard.
We also, we have a proclamation.
Forgot about that.
Mr. Minor, I think, were you going to read the proclamation? And so let's read that before we take.
Okay.
Okay, I'm about to complain here, and proclaim, excuse me. Whereas, the prosperity and the well-being of the citizens of Manatee County are highly dependent upon essential agricultural workers, from those planting and harvesting to owner, operators, managers, managerial positions and supporting positions, and whereas this year's Farm City Week celebration will highlight original essential workers, ag is here to stay, and what, and will honor the past, present, and future of Manatee County's essential agricultural workers, a vital contributor to the economy of Manatee County, and whereas Manatee County is in the midst of a pandemic in 2020 during which all agricultural workers are essential and had to make adjustments to the continue, to continue to bring food to our tables, and whereas University of Florida and IFAS Extension Manatee County Agents, farmers, market staff, and other essential agricultural workers worked on alternative waves to move produce from the farm to consumers and to food banks when normal distribution channels were disrupted by the pandemic, and whereas Manatee County has 753, 91% of them, has 793 farms, 91% of them are family farms, and 28% of the farms hire farm labor, production agriculture takes place on over 239,000 acres across our county, and whereas Manatee County is ranked second in the state for market value of agricultural products and sold for vegetables, melons, potatoes, and sweet potatoes in 12th in the nation in crops overall, and are ranked fourth in the state in livestock, poultry, and products, and ranked 14th in the state for those. Whereas Manatee County's agricultural production is large and diverse in vegetable crops, ornamental, horticulture, livestock, and forage, citrus, and commercial fishing and seafood aquaculture, total market value of all of these products sold is over $360 million. And whereas Farm City Week provides an opportunity for the general public to recognize and to better understand the contribution of essential agricultural workers in Manatee County, now therefore be it a proclaim by the School Board of Manatee County that November 7th through 20th, 2020 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Farm City Week. In Manatee County, Florida, encouraging all citizens to recognize the economic, social, and cultural contributions of agriculture and all essential agricultural workers, be it resolved that the School Board of Manatee County, Florida hereby enters this proclamation signed. Gina Messenger, Chair, Cynthia Saunders, Superintendent. Okay? Let's hear it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You can stay up here with the picture?
Yeah, I think I'll have a picture here. Where do you want? We'll be in the back. Okay. I'll be here.
You're fine.
Is this okay? Let's stop proclaiming right now. Thank you all.
Thank you.
By the way, I don't really think it would be Farm City Week if I didn't say this, because it's a tradition. Ralph Garrison always says, "Don't talk bad about a farmer if your mouth's full."
Okay. With that, we will move forward with our next presentation, which is the Inzada Dashboard Presentation. Mr. Hanson and Mr. McCarthy?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Saunders. Tonight, we'd like to take a couple minutes and provide you the progress and communicate that we're ready to open up our public academic dashboard. Before I turn it over to Evan, where he can get into the meat of the, of the academic dashboard and what we're actually doing with it, I'd like to take you back to June when you approved the Inzada Dashboard for us to start working on it. Prior to that, we did a proof of concept. We went live with it in early part of July as far as developing the dashboard and the data sources that feed what you're going to see tonight from a nightly perspective. And moving into last month, we opened it up to our principals and assistant principals and started getting information from them on feedback and things they would also like to see added in the future. So this will be something that will be, continue to be developed each day, each week, each month, and on Thursday, we'll actually add a tile on the website, and Evan will show you this, on Thursday, there'll be a tile that's added to our main dashboard and to all school websites called Academic Dashboard. It is live tonight, but you'll see that tile on Thursday as we have to work to get that replicated out to all of our sites and the templates. Couple things. Once we started the academic dashboard, the vision of Superintendent, part of our strategic plan was to also develop other dashboards. So I also want to take an opportunity to share with you, between December and probably spring break, we will go live with a financial dashboard for transparency. So data that we're collecting, including millage, STEM, capital, and all the various types of reports that we send to the state, to the Department of Education, we're going to share for transparency sake, a DOE financial dashboard as well. So that will be coming in the next couple of months. I think what you see is our idea behind the Inzada Academic Dashboard was to be a cost-efficient product, flexible, and we can continue to add dashboards from HR, transportation, food service, and technology. So those are all things that we're working on, but tonight is to show you the public dashboard, and we're referring to it as the academic dashboard. So Evan, you want to showcase it?
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent. So I'm just going to show you where our public one is at the moment. The public dashboard is like the original one, still under the About Us section from the district website, and then over here on the left, there's an academic dashboard. The other place that you can also find it is under the Assessment, Accountability, and Research Department site, and like Mr. Hanson said, it's going to be a tile up here pretty soon on all the school pages. So once you click through to it, we have kind of a couple different parts showing. There's the district grade section of the dashboard, and we've kind of combined a couple of what was under the old dashboard system under the new one. So first, there's the district grade that breaks it down, our whole district grade, and kind of like the old one, you can click through to get more information on each subject area. We still have our option for comparing different districts built in here. If you just click on that, it would load a new page. So that loads a new page where you can compare two different districts. With Manatee being the top one, then you can select another district around, other districts around the state. We do have kind of pre-populated what the typical, kind of what are most comparable districts are based on size and everything else, other demographics. Then if you scroll farther down, it goes and shares the district demographics. Instead of this being a separate dashboard, we now have it kind of combined into the same one, so you can see the number of schools for each type of school, our enrollment, percentage of our students from each subgroup, by grade level. We have this really cool new section over here that shows the staff breakdown in our district. So if you're kind of, if you're ever wondering what our largest staff group by job description or state job description would be, it's apparently our ESC pair of professionals. You can look through, the public can look through that. We have our ESSA and federal index information, that part of the new Every Student Succeeds Act is all broken down here, how many of our students are falling into each of those. And if you keep scrolling past that, we get to our school grade dashboards, where you can look up a specific school and see how that school did in their school grade. We've got that all broken down here and more information for that, just that school. And then we also have the school comparison tool again, so you can put two schools side by side under there. And so that one, like, so right now we have Braden River High School selected here, and then you can scroll down, select, compare it to, say, North Marion High School down here, and you can also change that. So say I want to look at one of our elementary schools or another school. Change. So I can change it to look at one of our elementary schools. Say I'm trying to decide where to send my daughter in a few years to elementary school. A little slow on me tonight, but it's getting there.
It must be all the students they have at that school.
Yep, there, that one loaded, and then I could choose another school over here in Marion County to look at, or I can choose one of our, switch to Manatee County and compare one of, two of our own schools. Clicking too many things too fast. And then the other thing, if you keep scrolling, we do have school demographics listed as well for each school that you look up, and we will have the staff information as well when it goes live on Thursday, I believe.
Thank you.
And yeah, that's the public dashboard.
Okay, well, thank you. It is 6:25. I had one more presentation to do before we move on to our public hearing, and it's for our wonderful board member, Mr. Minor. I truly believe that the mark of great leadership is when you leave a place better than when you inherited it. And Mr. Minor, I truly believe you can say that today.
Thank you.
During your longstanding eight years on the Board, school grades improved, most recently with no F-rated schools. During your time, the school district's ranking in the state has increased, and now it is the highest ranking Manatee County has ever achieved. And Mr. Minor, over your time on the Board, the district has gone from a place of deficits to now an A financial rating and healthy reserves. And over that same time, two community-driven committees were created to ensure transparency, for which we know that you played an instrumental role. And two years ago, it was your vision, diligence, and support that secured the additional funding for our teachers, staff, STEM, and technical programs and charter schools. There is no doubt about your dedication to the students, the teachers, employees, and families of Manatee County. And quite personally, it has been an honor to have served with you for the past four years.
Thank you.
And with that, I would like to thank you for your service, your stewardship, and your dedication, and I'd like to thank you from the Board. We have a beautiful plaque to give you.
Mr. Minor, you could be in the middle.
Absolutely.
Sacrifice.
I want to give you the opportunity, if there's anything else you'd like to say right now, like I said, I'll give you the last word tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
Would you rather have the last word, or you can have both?
Why don't I make my little song later on, okay?
Okay.
And thank you.
Absolutely, whichever one you wish. Then with that, it is just about 6:30, so we will skip ahead. Let me draw myself a note so I know where we stopped. We will skip ahead to our public hearing. So with that, I am going to close our regular meeting and convene our public hearing, and to be clear, this is a public hearing on, okay, so I'm going to, sorry. The Board will hear public comments regarding the proposed amendments to Policy 8450, 1209, 3209, 4209, and 8415, and answer questions related thereto. And with that, I will turn it over to Vice Chair Kennedy for a public comment.
There's no need to sign up for a public hearing. Anybody that would like to step forward and talk about Policy 8450 or the mask policy in general, but anybody who does step forward, please, we need to stick to the topic of the hearing. Which are those two items?
Yeah, Allison Hanson. Whereas the School Board has mandated masks at school for the last 90 days under the justification of an emergency, whereas if we are in recovery, we are no longer in an emergency. You can't be in recovery and emergency at the same time. Whereas if a disease is very dangerous and deadly, increased case rates should mean increased death rate. Whereas though case rates for COVID are going up in Florida, death rates are going down. Whereas the danger to school-aged children from COVID, and indeed everyone in every age group, is extremely low according to the CDC's own numbers, over 99% recovery rate for everyone up to age 69, and over 94% for ages 70-plus. Whereas we now have more knowledge about this disease and more treatment options, and whereas we as parents have the fundamental right to direct the upbringing, education, healthcare, and mental health care of our children, whereas the School Board does not have the right to mandate to parents and staff what medical interventions they must take, most especially ones that can cause harm to the individual, whereas masks are a medical intervention being forced upon our children and employees, whereas this is not a benign intervention, and it is having a negative physical, emotional, psychological, social, and academic effect upon many of our children, including my four, whereas the Board's attempts at protecting our children from COVID are now putting them at risk of other harms, and the attempts at defending them are now damaging them, whereas the School Board members as elected officials deriving their powers from we, the people, are required to preserve, not infringe, upon our rights as parents with regards to our children, whereas the last Board, at the last Board meeting, multiple Board members expressed their need for more data before being willing to let the mask mandate expire, and whereas we, the parents, live with the data, our children, every day, and desire to communicate that to the Board, whereas last week, the district did a sham survey of parents and employees that cannot be taken seriously and that was extremely suspect and liable towards manipulation due to the following. One could take the survey as many times as desired from anywhere in the world. There is no proof needed of one's child actually attending any of the district's schools. Even if repeat IP addresses are negated by the survey company, as Mr. Chapman led us moms to believe in an email conversation, a person could have taken the survey on multiple devices in multiple locations using different Wi-Fi's, all showing different IPs. If a father and a mother each wanted to complete their own survey but use the same computer, it would be a repeat IP address. In the past, parents could complete one survey for each child in the district. If a parent did that this time from the same device, will their repeat surveys from the same IP address be negated? If multiple parents took their surveys from the same computer at the library, would those be negated? Anyone could have.
I will not state the names of those that created such a piece of work for our survey. The questions were horribly misleading, depending on how you, as a parent or employee, took the questions. We ask for it to be clear and concise, to give every parent and employee the opportunity to take said survey once, not multiple times. Also, anyone that was not an employee could have selected a school and took the survey, and vice versa. Lastly, there was not a question for parents or employee choice of mask in schools listed on the survey. When we asked as parents why the survey could be taken by anyone, we heard the excuse of how the software, survey software was awesome and sorted out any doubles from IP addresses, and that this is the company that all surveys the district does come from lies. Every survey until now has been from Google Forms, not from this company. I also asked why this survey was only posted on school websites and the district website. We got an email and one phone call about where to go to do the survey. Why was the link not directly sent to the parents? It is also crazy to me that I only got one call and one email to tell me to take said survey, when any other time I am getting multiple emails, calls a week for other surveys, and to make sure my kid doesn't go back to school sick. I am sad to have read an article yesterday that the school board gave snippets of minutes from the last couple of meetings to the media. It made parents sound as if we were unintelligent and could not properly read sources for factual information. We, the people, have selected you as our public servants. We have asked you to listen to us and respect that we can make sound decisions for our families. But you continue to make claims that you can't trust us to make the right decisions on protecting our children and others. I hope all of you have enjoyed sitting where you are, because before long, your seat, too, will be filled with new blood, just like Mr. Minor's, which will be filled on November 17th. Time for change.
All right. Get it, girl.
Uh, would anybody else like to address, uh, Policy 8450? Oh, come on, yeah.
I just want to point out, there's also Policy 1209, 3209, 4209, and 8415. Just, I know that that's the hot topic, but I want to make sure that anybody that came to speak on any of those.
For the record, Glenn Gableena, thank you very much for this opportunity. And what a great change of venue that you're accompanying the public now. Uh, it's quite apparent, uh, from the last couple of speakers, that obviously the, the survey was tainted. That's how I see that. And I've been involved in a few other surveys, so I guess my question is, if this is such a good idea, and the parents are so concerned that they, they are for the mask mandate, then where are they now? I mean, why aren't they speaking up now? You would think there'd be an even 50-50, just like the election. Hey, we're for it, we're against it. But the only, the only public comment I hear this evening is against it. So, uh, again, they brought up some good points. I believe the, the survey could be done better. I believe this one is tainted, you should throw it out, and, uh, start over, and get the pulse of the, of, of the parents themselves. Uh, or, you know, I guess my question would be, have you had any written emails from the 46,000 parents that say, "Yeah, we love the idea, we want to keep our kids safe"? Are those on the record, on the agenda tonight? Probably not. So, put up or shut up. These folks put up, man, so I, I heard their message. Uh, I'm not, I'm not debating whether it's a good policy or not, I'm debating how you went about it. And the only thing that I hear tonight is that it's detrimental to their kids. So, um, that's my two cents on that. I appreciate you opening it up to the public. Uh, you're, you're, you're moving in the right direction, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Hi, Bridget Mendel. I would like to know why we have a, a screen here, but we still have to have a mask when we speak. Is there any reason why we can't do this the way the Board of County Commissioners does? They have the screen, you take off your mask, you speak, and here you can have some wipes, and we can wipe down the mics or whatever's here. Because this really makes no sense, to make us speak through a mask while we have this screen right here. So, can we look into that policy? That'll be quite helpful, because it's very difficult to share what we want to get across to our listeners, and it's also very important that they can read our, our expressions on our faces as well. So it's very difficult to do with a mask, it's hard to breathe, and I've spent a lot of money on this, as have the rest of the people in this room, for this pizza, piece of Plexiglas to, to do its job. So I think we need to revisit public comment here at the dais, and, uh, allow us to remove our masks when we speak, and give us something to wipe down the mics. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Shaylan Summer. Good evening, members of the school board. I'd like to acknowledge the uniqueness of the situation you are in, and the difficulty it must be trying to navigate these times. I know our community and our country are divided at the moment. It saddens me, as I'm sure it does you. To see this contention around us, this contention and this divide, it didn't start with the election. It started when people, we the people, felt our rights as Americans were being taken away from us. This new normal we have been experiencing since March has left us with heightened sense of anxiety and depression among both adults and children, and that is a fact. We could go back and forth with the numbers and the statistics of how COVID has impacted us, but we won't. I'd like for you to take a moment, though, to consider the impact this has had on our children. They are afraid to sneeze or clear their throat without fear of being sent home from school. They have not been allowed to run and play freely at recess without the fear of disapproving words from school staff telling them to keep their distance. They go most of the day without seeing a single smile from the ones they need a smile from the most. In a system where they spend a majority of their day, our children had not, have not had the opportunity to be children. As educators, you know children thrive in an environment where they feel secure and loved. This starts from the moment they are born. As much as our teachers try to provide this, it is unable to happen because of the restrictions you have put in place. There are many of us who have chosen for our children to do e-learning as a way to still stay connected to the schools and the teachers we love. I realize I am in a position where I can do this, but not everyone has that choice. Some, many, have to put their kids in brick and mortar, whether they agree with the mandates or not. They have to comply in order to pay the bills and put food on the table. For those parents who don't have that choice, my heart truly goes out to them. The bottom line is, it's about choice. I am here to request that you vote no on the proposed change to 8450. I am here to request that teachers, parents, and children get to choose whether to wear a mask or not, given the fact that we all know there is a higher probability of us dying in a car accident driving home from this meeting than there is from testing positive and dying of COVID. I am here to ask you to carefully consider the repercussions of this mandate, both now and in the future. You have been elected to a position of power within our community. I don't know how you could ever go wrong by giving people the power to choose for themselves. Our freedoms and our children's freedoms that we teach within these school walls should be protected at all cost. Please, give us our choice.
Would anybody else like to address any of the policies that are up for discussion tonight? Okay, I'm sure I think that's gonna be good.
Okay. Um, with that, I will close the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting and move forward with approval of activating Section B of Policy 8450. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend approval of the amendment to Policy 8450, Control of Casual Contact, Communicable Diseases, and activating Section B.
Do I have a, sorry, do I have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Got a motion by Dr. Hope, so I have a second.
Second.
Second, by Reverend Golden. Um, seeing as, Dr. Hope, you made the motion, our board protocols would allow you to speak first on this topic.
All right, thank you. Um, you know, members to the public, I mean, this is, this is, this is difficult. None of us asked for this. We didn't create this virus, we didn't create the pandemic, we didn't create the local epidemic. Uh, we, we were handed this, uh, as, you're right, the elected officials, uh, that sit up here, who by federal definition are the local education authority, uh, and by state definition, we are the, the school board of Manatee County. And, and we did take an oath of office. And, and part of that, in addition to upholding the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida, is, is to uphold the, the laws of the state of Florida. And, and one of the responsibilities that, that we hold closest is the health, safety, and welfare of your children when they're entrusted with us. And there has been a tremendous amount of rhetoric. Uh, there are things in the news that are not supported by scientific evidence. Uh, the, the issue of masks is something that has been known, at least since I've been involved with the SARS virus going back to 2002, that masks make a difference. And it's been proven. Um, you know, I, I ask for everyone's support. Uh, this is not a popularity contest. Uh, regardless of the, the validation of a survey, we, we should not, as your elected officials, utilize a survey to determine what decisions to make to protect the health, safety, and welfare of your children. We did a survey to get some feedback, and, and the survey showed that a majority of parents, regardless of whether you think it was valid, the majority of our educators, according to the Manatee Education Association, expect us to do all that we can to limit the spread of this virus in our schools and in our communities.
I, I'm sorry, right now, it's Dr. Hope's time.
I, I, we, we have a letter that we've received from the Medical Society, which is made up of the licensed physicians who take care of our families, who take care of our childrens. And in it, they reference peer-reviewed publications of scientific evidence, and they recommend we continue to follow the CDC guidelines, including our mask requirement. I teach this. I'm a professor at LECOM, and I'm a professor at USF. And all the literature, and I went through the literature this morning again, it all supports the decisions that we're making. What we're doing is, what we are doing is working. We have one of the, the, the lowest rates in our schools across the, the state of Florida. And so with that, I do have one concern, I'm not gonna really issue it. We refer to a pandemic. It is possible in the future, it may not be a pandemic, we may have an epidemic, but for the purposes of, of what we're dealing with today, and we're gonna be dealing with this, I believe, until next summer. So folks, don't count on this virus going away tomorrow. Uh, with that, I, I ask for your positive support for this change. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I'm just gonna remind the audience that, um, we had our public hearing where we allowed the public to speak. Now it is time for the board to have their conversation, okay? If there is other feedback you'd like to give and address to us, there is a public comment time at the end of the meeting, which you are welcome, if you have already signed up, and a lot of people have already signed up, you are welcome to come back and address us. Um, with that, the seconder was Reverend Golden. Reverend Golden, would you like to speak on this topic?
I have no additional comments to make.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this topic? Uh, Vice Chair Kennedy.
Thanks, I don't have a button to hit speaking. Um, I just have a couple of thoughts I want to share, pieces of feedback that I've gotten over the past week, and, um, just sort, uh, and, and that kind of update page we got today addressed one of them, which was, when, when this kind of hit the agenda and, um, you know, the, the public saw the agenda and saw what was on it, one of the things that I heard consistently was that we were creating a quote-unquote "forever" policy, which, I, I guess in terms of, um, you know, literally, it is a forever policy, although as with any policy, we can rescind it at any time by a board, by a vote of a board majority. Um, but I did, uh, I did see in the notes, there was a mention of March 9th of next year, was, was that, Superintendent Saunders, was the, was the thinking around that, that that would be kind of a check-in for, to see where we are, community spread and?
Can I answer that?
Absolutely.
Sure. I was just gonna say, one of the concerns that I, I heard the same concern, so one of the things I suggested was that we revisit it every 90 days, and that's actually one of my suggestions that I was gonna make today when it comes around to my turn. But I think that they put that in there so that there would at least be another, like a solid date of when it could be revisited. But I think that was, the intention is that people know this isn't forever, the board will continue to revisit it, the board will continue to discuss it.
Okay, yeah, which is where I was going, uh, 'cause I think that's a, I think that's just kind of a common sense, um, request of the public to say, like, can we check in from time to time to see where we are, to see where rates are? Um, so yeah, Madam Chair, I'd support that as well. Um, the, uh, a couple pieces, and this isn't really a policy issue, this is more of an implementation of policy question, but there's been a lot of conversation about mask breaks. Now, when we started talking about this policy back in June, it was, it really what it is now, is that if you're inside a school district building or a school bus, that you must wear a mask. And so, but I do think there are, um, there are valid concerns. Now granted, it can be a very slippery, slippery slope, because as soon as you start letting up on your policy, then it, you create a free-for-all. Um, but if there's an organized way to say, like, kids do need a mask break, um, personally, I'm a little nervous about mask breaks inside classrooms, because that, because then it gets done differently. Again, this is a matter of policy, I set that up front, I realize that. But if there is a way to put in, to, um, into our rules, an allowance for mask breaks outside, I, I realize the elementary kids have more opportunities to be outside, whereas the secondary students do not. And then, um, kind of related to that, it was the same parent she brought up to me, that we sometimes have AC units that go down, and so obviously mask-wearing inside of a school with an AC unit can, can be an issue. I just, I did think that was, um, that was one of the pieces of feedback that I got, that I, I wanted to bring forward, because I thought that was a legitimate concern. Because, you know, we all know these are, like, incredibly annoying, um, but it's just, I feel something we have to do together, it can't be piecemeal, some people do it and some people don't, because that's really kind of defeats the purpose of, of wearing masks. And then finally, um, one, and Superintendent Saunders is aware of this one, because I copied her on my response to the teacher. Um, and again, this is not necessarily policy, but this is, I just wanted the board to kind of think about how we, the, the kind of, uh, intended and unintended consequences of, of the policies we put out. Um, but it's an elementary teacher, and she brought up to me the point that the kids are all wearing masks, but they also have those plastic dividers, and some of the kids who are not as close to the front are having trouble seeing her, or seeing what she has on her screen, or whatever the case may be. And so her question was, if the students are wearing masks, are these dividers really necessary, because they're really getting in the way of instruction? And so, um, those, those are the ones I wanted to bring forward, just as kind of food for thought, and, um, obviously, we're, we're taking today to stop and think about the policy. And I do, I, I, kind of at the beginning when this came up, when I heard this thing about forever policy, I kind of brushed it aside, because like, there's no forever policy, they come and go as the board pleases, but, um, but I came around to think, like, that, that check-in date is a really good idea, so at least there is some, um, I don't wanna say light at the end of the tunnel, but, but, but the critics of the policy know that it will be under, it will be under constant review, so, but, um, I think as everybody knows, I'm fully in support of the policy as it is right now. I think, as I've said before, it's the only reason we've been successful at all in keeping our schools open, and to, to let it lapse or to start being wishy-washy about it, I think is only gonna lead to the trouble. So, that's all I have for now, Madam Chair, thanks.
Um, I'm sorry, Madam Superintendent, do you want to make a comment on that?
Uh, I would, if you don't mind, I'd like to follow up on, uh, what Mr. Kennedy said. Uh, what we did, the survey was an overarching survey. Uh, we did, it, the company did remove any duplicate, uh, responses, so if there were a parent that had multiple students, that family...
But it's an elementary teacher, and she brought up to me the point that the kids are all wearing masks, but they also have those plastic dividers, and some of the kids who are not as close to the front are having trouble seeing her, or seeing what she has on her screen, or whatever the case may be. And so her question was, if the students are wearing masks, are these dividers really necessary? Because they're really getting in the way of instruction. And so, those, those are the ones I wanted to bring forward, just as kind of food for thought, and obviously, we're, we're taking today to stop and think about the policy. And I do, I, kind of at the beginning when this came up, when I heard this thing about forever policy, I kind of brushed it aside, because like, there's no forever policy. They come and go as the board pleases, but, but I came around to think, like, that, that check-in date is a really good idea, so at least there is some, I don't wanna say light at the end of the tunnel, but, but, but the critics of the policy know that it will be under, it will be under constant review, so, but I think, as everybody knows, I'm fully in support of the policy as it is right now. I think, as I've said before, it's the only reason we've been successful at all in keeping our schools open, and to, to let it lapse, or to start being wishy-washy about it, I think is only gonna lead to trouble. So, that's all I have for now, Madam Chair. Thanks.
I'm sorry, Madam Superintendent, do you want to make a comment on that?
I would, if you don't mind, I'd like to follow up on what Mr. Kennedy said. What we did, the survey was an overarching survey. We did, it, the company did remove any duplicate responses, so if there were a parent that had multiple students, that family only had one selection of choice that is correct, because it was an overall district, not an individual school-based lens of looking at it. In addition to the feedback that you had, and we had over 9,000 parents, what you did see, and one of you may want to go over the, the data, because I know I gave it to all of you, I don't have it right in front of me right this second, on, on the questions, but I was surprised that the parents really were in favor, as well, of course, as the employees. But what the overarching thing that we did hear was mask breaks, and right now, your policy does allow them for outside. It does not allow anything for inside. So that was the language that we had heard, and the feedback we heard. So the highlighted area we sent you was just suggestions of the protocol language. That doesn't necessarily mean that's what you're voting on. It, it just gave you a starting point. The other comments that we did hear was, is this forever? I mean, many people, you know, had a problem with that, so that's why we did put date certain, so every 90 days, the board could come back and reevaluate it. We have heard that there could very well be a vaccination soon. If, if that's the case, the landscape and, and infection could change drastically, so we did make it that the board will come back, and we put a specific board meeting date on there, so that parents would know when that was going to happen as a consideration. And in addition to the feedback from that survey, we had the Medical Advisory Council, made up of medical professionals in the community, send feedback in a position paper to the board. We had the MEA Survey, their bargaining group, which is made up of teachers and paraprofessionals, and also provided Dr. Bency with the Health Department's individual feedback in her position, just so that you could get an overarching idea today of, of what the community feels, so that you have a place to make any adjustments, amendments, or, or whatever you feel that's necessary moving forward for the school year.
Madam Chair, I have a question of the superintendent.
Reverend Golden.
Yes. Madam Superintendent, is anything that you just said not something that you have not spoken to each one of the members of this board about in our individual briefings that take place before we come to this meeting and after the agenda is set forth? Is there anything that you just said just now that we do not already know?
No, sir, except I gave you the most up-to-date data of-
I didn't hear, I didn't hear your first word.
I've given you the most up-to-date-
Your first word.
But yes, you, you're all aware of all the information, yes. That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I think the remarks that we've heard tonight are, are great remarks, and help explain where the board has been, the seriousness that this board takes its duties. And its duties include not just the privilege, but a requirement to look out for the health and safety of its students that are there. Parents certainly have the right to disagree. I praise them for coming before us and sharing their concerns, and maybe suggesting ways that we can do it better. If parents believe that their children are better served in a school where children don't have to wear masks, where teachers don't have to wear masks, no staff have to wear masks, they have the right to do that. To expose their children, you know, to a disease that may kill their children, they have that right. Now, I think that would be a ridiculous decision. I agree. I wouldn't do it, but you have that right. But this board is a public board that takes its duties of safety and health seriously. To say that, because I am a parent, and being a parent is the best job I've ever had in my life, most enjoyable job in my life, and my children have been the most important thing. To say that I have the right, as, as an individual, not as a board member, to determine how my child affects other children's health without a board, you know, taking steps to make sure my child minimizes their conveying any kind of disease to other children, doesn't wash with me, and has not washed with the courts. Now, people can go spend money filing a lawsuit, like they've done in Sarasota, but I don't think it's going anywhere, and it will not go anywhere. The, the precedents are longstanding, that, you know, governments, you know, have a right to do what is necessary to protect their citizenry, including the children and the health of them, that they have to have, you know, certain shots, and they have to show that to go into the school. And that's been attacked by the same arguments, that the parents have the right to determine whether they get them or not. And it's been rejected. And, but people can sue. The, it has a negative effect, because it takes away money that otherwise can be used to, you know, promote the education, you know, of, you know, the children, of all the children, their children. My vote is for the safety and the health of all the children. Asking them, asking parents, saying that you have to have, under certain circumstances like we have now, that there be a mask be worn, I don't think is being unreasonable, and it's certainly consistent with our duties. And we will try to address this, this terrible problem that's facing us, you know, for the best of the community, the best for our staff, and most of all, you know, best for the children that come through our, our school doors. And we pray, you know, with you, you know, that this comes to an end soon. We will try to make adjustments in regard to, in response to, the suggestions that have been made, if they're appropriate. But I don't think there is a legitimate question that this duty, this board has a duty, you know, to, you know, take steps in requiring masks, you know, for the protection and health, safety of our children. And so I am going to vote in favor of the motion that is on the floor. Thank you.
Okay, everyone's had a turn. I just want to go back, the superintendent requested that we state the, the information from the survey, so I'm gonna state that, that information for everyone. The first question asks, "Do you support continuing the current policy requiring face mask slash coverings for students while in school in accordance with the operating protocol for Policy 8450?" Fifty-nine percent said, "Yes, I support continuing the current policy." Forty-one percent said, "No, I do not support continuing the current policy." Question two asked, "Would you support allowing face mask, masks slash coverings to be optional for students only in classroom and only when seated at their assigned student station? All other ma- mask slash covering protocols and safety measures would still apply in accordance with the operating protocol for Policy 8450?" Forty-five percent said, "Yes, I support the change." Fifty-five percent said, "No, I do not support the change." When asked if this policy was changed to what they stated were the no masks at the desks, basically, what would you choose to do? Six percent said they would send their kids back to brick and mortar. Twenty percent said they would actually switch their kids back to e-learning. Fifty-four percent said they would keep their current modality, and twenty percent said they didn't have an answer. Question four asked, "Would you support allowing face mask slash covering breaks for students while indoors and with social distancing during the school day?" Sixty-one percent of parents and families said, "Yes, I support this change." Thirty-nine percent said, "No, I do not support that change." And when asked, "What would you do if that change were enacted?", five percent said they would switch their child to brick and mortar. Sixteen percent said they would switch their child back to e-learning. Fifty-nine percent said they would keep their child at their current modality, and nineteen percent said they do not have an answer at this time. And then the last question asked, "What modality of learning is your child currently enrolled in?", seventy-five percent said brick and mortar. Sixteen percent said e-learning, and eight percent said hybrid. And I guess I'd be interested to know how reflective of those final numbers are to our current student population. Is seventy-five percent of our student population in brick and mortar? Sixteen percent in e-learning, and eight percent in hybrid? Because that, that number seems kind of high for hybrid to me. But I guess I'd like to know how reflective those numbers are to our current numbers. Do you know those numbers?
Yes, I have, elementaries, eighty-three percent brick and mortar, and seventeen percent e-learning. Middle school, we have seventy-seven percent brick and mortar, and the remainder in e-learning. We do not have any hybrid. We just have the high school numbers in, and district number, hang on, I just put it in a folder over here today. So, high school modality is, district total, we have fifty-four percent brick and mortar, twenty-five percent e-learning, and twenty-one percent hybrid.
So perhaps averaged altogether, maybe those, those percentages are pretty representative of, of our student population. That's kind of interesting. Okay, the other data, I'll, I'll read out for everyone, is the employee poll, there was also a separate employee one. The current, the first question was, "Do you support the continuing of the current policy?", it was the same questions. Seventy-four percent answered yes, twenty-six percent answered no. The first question was, "Would you support, would you support allowing face masks to be optional for students only in their classroom setting when they're at their desks?", and thirty percent said yes, twenty, or seventy percent said no. And the, the, I'm not gonna read the third question, because that was really about students. So the fourth question was, "Would you support allowing mask breaks?", forty-four percent of employees, or teachers, employees said yes, and fifty-six percent of employees said no. And just to, another bit of information, it was asked, well, asked what modality your child is in. I guess I would imagine these might be what they're actually teaching, but it was eighty-two percent brick and mortar, thirteen percent e-learning, and five percent hybrid. So I just, I wanted to put that information out there. I truly believe that my job is really to listen. I always say that. I really like to listen to everyone. There was a question about, you know, emails. I can honestly say I have had far, far more emails in favor of keeping the current policy than I have had otherwise. And that's the, that's the, it's probably a ten-to-one ratio, and I'm sure everyone else sitting up here's probably had the same number. And that, that's just the truth. And, and that's, like I said, my job is really to listen. So I went to all the schools in my district, and I talked to all the principals, and I asked, "How is the policy working?", because I really want to hear from the boots-on-the-ground, from the people that are enacting it, the people that are having to follow it, the people that are having to make sure it is followed. How is it working? And every principal I spoke to said the policy was working well in their school. Every principal I spoke to said that they have not had significant problems, and that it's been relatively smooth for their schools. I spoke to teachers, and I can, I can say that there are teachers that are not in favor of the current policy. I can say that there are more teachers that are in favor of the current policy. I can say that some of the teachers that I've spoken to that are not in favor of the current policy, some of their problems and the concerns that they have about the policy are really how it's being applied in their school, and not what is actually written in our papers, and in our policy and our protocols. And the same for the parents. I have had parents contact me with concerns about the policy, and then when I send them, for instance, the person you mentioned, that teacher today about the dividers, I sent them the protocols. I said, "Nowhere in these protocols does it say, 'We support dividers.' Nowhere in these protocols does it say, 'We demand dividers.'" That was never in our protocols that we approved, that came before us. We've never said that. That might be a district decision, that might be a school-based decision, but I think what I have heard from teachers and parents is, it is not being well communicated on what are the allowances and what are not, and what, and how to make it through this with any kind of genuine, there, there are, there are at times medical concerns, and, and how to navigate those. And, and even the, the breaks outdoors. We've, I've had parents, I'm sure everyone's had parents, contact them and say, "Well, I really want my child to be able to take off their mask at recess." That's already done, but it's just not being evenly applied. And I think, and that comes down to shield as well. Some schools permit it, some schools are not. And, and so it's just really not being evenly applied. And some of that I understand. A teacher has a right to run their classroom. A teacher has a right to say, you know, "This is what I need in, in order to make sure I have a functioning classroom." I want to support that as much as possible. But I also want to make sure that our students and our families have the support they need, and, and the breaks that they need, and, and some reasonableness to it all. And that's really always my goal. I try really hard to listen to everyone, and really take it from all sides that I can possibly take it on, take every piece of data that I can possibly take, and be as reasonable as possible about everything that I get. And with that, that's why I suggested that we revisit this every 90 days. And what I want to add, and it, it kind of got added in the protocols document that got sent, but what I really wanted to do was add it to this actual policy that we have before us tonight, and, you know, on the chair, so I can hand over my gavel if I need to make the motion, but I'm hoping that somebody else would support this. But in the policy, it says, "Section B of this policy shall only take effect by a majority vote of the board, and will remain in effect until the majority of the vote, board votes otherwise." After that sentence, I would like to add the sentence, "The board will revisit this section every 90 days while enacted." It just cements it in our policy that whenever Section B is enacted, we will revisit it every 90 days, which is what we talked about. And I think it would give parents an assurance that we will continually discuss this, continually look at this, because in 90 days, we might be in a different place. If the board doesn't feel comfortable moving now, maybe in 90 days we will. But I really feel as if we don't put something in here tonight, I, I, I don't think that that's really fair to all the parties that are truly concerned. That's parents, that is teachers, that is schools. I, I think it deserves to be revisited every 90 days. It, it, it could be more extreme. I don't know what 90 days looks like, but I would really like to add that sentence in here, if possible.
I would, I'll make the motion for the chair, but I would, I'm trying to word it at least every 90 days, because we may decide in fifteen days.
That's fine.
Something may come out, you know, in the literature or from the CDC, and we would do it, you know, you know, as needed, but at-
At least every 90 days.
Before you make your motion, I, I have a question of the chair. The, it seems like we're doing 90 days, and we're doing it now. Is there any appetite to make this coincide with the, the quarters that we, that we already have? You know, just to try to give it, give it some sense of predictability, so it doesn't surprise anybody, and we don't wind up having to have a different meeting. As opposed to 90 days from tonight, that puts us over in- that puts us over into February, I think, or something like that. And then again in April, as opposed to doing it with the, with the quarters.
I can see the value behind doing that, except for this really wouldn't coincide with that. And I, I would be worried that this is, this policy is meant to be here in perpetuity. And we don't know what that looks like for any other bizarre incident that were to happen again in the future. I would be worried if we said quarterly, that that might not function in the future. And my goal was just something that would be longstanding, like whenever this is enacted, we will discuss it at least every ninety days. I like at least, that's much better.
You embrace that. You embrace the at least ninety days.
I like the at least.
Why don't we just amend the motion? Who made, did you make it? And I second it. Well, if you'll amend the motion to include that recommendation, then I'll.
I believe he did. I believe that was his motion.
Yeah, that was my move.
His motion was to add this sentence, the board will revisit this section at least every ninety days.
That's to amend the, the recommendation.
To amend it, yes.
Then I'll second that.
Okay, so we have an amendment that has been, had a motion and a second. And the amendment for clarity will be, and if you have the policy in front of you, it is the, after the section B of this policy shall only take effect by a majority vote of the board and will remain in effect until the majority of the board votes otherwise. The amendment will add the sentence, the board will revisit this section at least every ninety days while enacted.
That's good.
And Dr. Hopes, you made that motion and you have signed up to speak. Is there something else you'd like to add? On this motion?
On, on this motion, I, I do think, I do think it's important. And, and also with regards to your comments about how it's enacted. So I think, I think this is a positive step in the right direction to assure the public that this is not a perpetual action, that, that we're going to be diligent and, and we are going to reevaluate on, on a somewhat frequent basis. Thank you.
Mr. Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to have input from our superintendent regarding this particular motion about at least every ninety days.
Okay. Madam Superintendent, do you have anything to add about this motion?
Yep, we'll make sure we make the amended changes and make sure it coincides as close to a board meeting date as possible.
Right. I mean, that would be, I mean, that's the important thing. Yes, Vice Chair Kennedy.
Yeah, on the ninety day issue, I just want to remind everybody of one other related piece here that is kind of our next issue coming down the road at us, which is what the Commissioner of Education is going to do with, when the executive order expires. So I think not only is this, this continued mask mandate important, but it's going to become even more important if we find ourselves in January with an order to return all kids to school under the threat of lost funding. Now, that's, that's the concern of some, including myself. And but the, the strange thing to me about the situation is that the commissioner and the governor for, and for years, and our allies for years have been talking about how great school choices and parents should have choices. So to now say in the midst of a pandemic that we are going to take all of your choices away, especially when we had e-learning even before the pandemic. And the only reason I wanted to highlight this now is because it's already kind of getting out there into community circles. But it's, but people don't quite have the full story. They think this board is going to make a decision to take away e-learning. So I'm trying to educate people as they get to me about what the situation is. But I, but I think this ninety day review is very important. And I think, you know, the Commissioner of Education said mid-November for a decision, so that's right around the corner. So that we kind of have converging issues here around the pandemic in education. So I wanted to just highlight that. And that, that first check-in may have to be before ninety days, depending on what January looks like. So thanks, Madam Chair.
And I think if, if we need to do that, that's why I think that it's really important to add the words at least. I think that really helps. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. This is only on the amendment to add this sentence to the policy. So all those in favor of the amendment to add the sentence, the board will revisit this section at least every ninety days while enacted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the policy has been amended to add that sentence. Is there any further discussion on this policy as it has now been amended? Okay, seeing none, I have a couple more things. This afternoon, we received an email about the protocols. And these protocols were previously approved by the board. They are not before us tonight. But there was one section added. And it was section G. And I'm going to read that section that was added in case you didn't get to see your email yet. It said, face masks slash coverings are not required in the cafeteria while eating or during PE, recess and outdoor activities. School administrators may implement an indoor or classroom face mask covering breaks during the school day as long as social distancing is adhered to the best of the ability of all students and employees. This would take effect November eleventh, twenty twenty. I do not believe that that is the best way to achieve what that statement is saying. Mainly because I feel like many of the topics in that statement are actually stated in points above that. And I think that the points above that instead should be at edited. So I just want to read those into the record. And then since this is not coming before us, but I trust that the district is going to edit this and put it out to the families, I'm just going to put out what I believe that it should be. And the district will revise as they feel appropriate. Take them or leave them. I am not the lawyer sitting up here, obviously. But the first one was point A. Point A states, students who need a break from their face mask may do so with teacher permission provided social distancing can be maintained under specific outdoor circumstances, not indoors. I believe that a better way to achieve a mask break bullet point would be to use this point and cite that students who need a break from their face mask may do so with teacher permission provided social distancing can be maintained. Period. I, I don't see the point in overcomplicating it. To me, I don't think you need to do anything else other than say that. And they would need to work with their teacher in order to achieve that. Once again, it comes down to the teacher running their classroom. The teacher might say, I know how I would do it. I know what I would do in my classroom is I'd create a spot that really would have distance. I'd allow them to take their break, maybe I'd set a timer or whatever else I need to do. I'd have a process developed for it. I'm sure every other classroom teacher will as well. But to me, if the goal is to achieve a break, I don't see the point in creating another bullet point. I think that one just needs to be altered. And the rest of the board may not agree with me, but I'm going to put that out there. The second change that I believe should be made is section D. And it says, no face covering is required during physical education classes, recess or other outdoor activities as long as social distancing practices are in place. Students must wear face cloth, or cloth face masks to and from physical education class, to and from the recess location or activity. I believe that this policy should, this line should say, no face covering. Sorry, I'm going to go back to my notes. No face covering is required during physical education classes, recess or other outdoor activities. Period. And remove that second half of that sentence that says as long as social distancing practices are in place. Simply because it's outdoors and I think during recess, I don't really feel like that's even realistic, to be quite honest. And we do allow parents to opt out of that. But I, I don't see the point in that sentence. And if you did those two changes, I don't think you need section G at all. And it just removes it, it just makes it more concise. And, and, and one of the things that, like I said, I'd heard was parents, teachers really hearing inconsistencies. And, and I just want to make sure it's clear and consistent. So those would be my two edits. And I think that would make it clearer and more consistent. It doesn't change what was already put in front of us for number, for letter G. But it just alters what is already existence. And to me, it makes it all complicated. But like I said, I'm not an attorney. However you want to word it, but I think it achieves the same purpose either way.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I am an attorney.
I know you are.
So.
Your law office, Golden, Di, Titlebaum, Minor. Oh, wait, Minor is, Minor's first, I'm sorry. Minor, Golden, Di, Titlebaum.
So the thing that I'm seriously that I'm trying to draw upon is we have a policy that we are considering.
Yes.
And anything that is inconsistent with that policy literally becomes moot. It is no longer effective. Am I, am I right about that, Mr. Titlebaum? The Di, my, my partners agree. So while it's good to explain that which is moot, I think the overarching point that you're trying to make is that that which is confusing and that which seems to be contradictory is moot. And what remains is the essence of what we have decided here. And that is, as far as we have said, that we will have masks and we will have them in classes. And they will be there when they, when they are in, in contact with one another. As far as we are saying that, that's what we are ruling upon. I think you, I think it was you who said earlier, part of the problem is that we have differences from school to school, which I think is something that we should direct to the superintendent to remove. That, that, that's the only thing. As opposed to us parsing the policy and trying to cover every eventuality, I think what we're really saying is that this is the policy that we want to have. And that anything else that's inconsistent with this, we expect the administration to, to remove. And so far from what I've heard you say, I don't see any, how there could be any issue with, with the exclusions that you want to modify or change the language. It's just, it's just not necessary from a policy standpoint.
I appreciate your support. But what we are setting is the policy. And what I'm talking about is really these internal protocols.
Right.
And so I want to make sure that typically the board doesn't have the internal protocols even come before us. But these did come before us. And because they did, I, I just, I do want to have a say. And I do agree with you, if they are confusing, if they are not aligned, then they should be moot. But what I want to make sure is that we are continuing to focus on being as clear as possible, to be as reasonable as possible, to follow the CDC recommendations, which, which these changes would still do, but it would allow for some breaks for our kids. And that's really my main focus.
Which is what we're going to be doing, which is why we're reviewing it every ninety days. I didn't have an opportunity to speak before with respect to the amendment. But I simply want to say, we have been incremental all along in what we have been doing. There's been no drastic changes in the direction that we have taken this district. We have maintained the safety of our children and our staff. We have a low, the lowest, we are contributing to the lowering of the risk in the county. And nothing that we are doing here is going to change that, including reviewing the policy every ninety days. That's, that's, that's the only point that I'm trying to make.
Okay. I do ask that when the district does review their protocols and update the protocols, as, as we kind of talked about, that we find ways to properly communicate that to the parents, to, and to the teachers and to the schools, so that we are ensuring that they're all being followed. And that, that really benefits everyone if we can ensure that. So that whatever we need to do, if we need to create a flyer, we need to create a video, we need to create, whatever we need to do, a meme. I know some people like, you know, whatever, whatever we need to do to communicate that so that everybody's on the same page. So that we don't have one school that's doing this and another school is doing that and another school is doing this. And then one parent saying, well, my kid can't do this and my kid, oh, my kid does it. Even when I visited the principals and went to every single school, I would talk to the, and one school would allow things that weren't even in our policy at all. And other schools didn't allow things that were in our policy. So it was just so, there was such a dichotomy that I just want there to be consistency for everyone's sake. And that, and that's really my goal there. And, and I appreciate that. And I see that, Dr. Hopes, you have signed up to speak.
Yeah, and then we can move on. But I, I wanted to reiterate the point because, you know, I tried to reach out and have phone conversations with, with these parents. And, and what I found in, in having that dialogue is that as the chair is mentioning, it's the way in which some schools and some teachers are implementing the protocols. And a perfect example is, I had a great conversation with a parent of a freshman student at Lakewood Ranch High School. And he wasn't questioning the mask policy, but apparently when his child is in PE and on the track, walking or running around the track, they're being required to wear masks. And I was like stunned. I said, like, you know, because look, the data shows when the humidity is high, the virus floats in the air a much shorter period of time. But you're outside. And I, Mr. Minor, too, I mean, I've, I've, I've run around a track thousands of times. And for the life of me, there's lines that you can even separate people. I, I really had a hard time understanding why they would be wearing masks outside in the first place. But when they're on a track, moving around a track and they're being yelled at, according to the father, that they have to wear their mask is, is, it's creating problems that we shouldn't have to deal with. And I know it's tough, but however you're going to communicate this and make it clear, and even if you have to dummy it down, so there's little room to misinterpret the expectation, it's important because that some of, some of these things I just, it shocks me because it's not the board. That's, that, that is not the direction we have provided. And so the implementation of this is critical so that, you know, we, we have to be reasonable. But I, I hope tomorrow, there isn't anyone in our district that's making kids wear a mask outside on a track or playground or whatever. Because I believe the board's been clear in our policy that when you're outside and you can maintain some semblance of, of social distancing, it, it's not required and it's probably not even wise. Thank you.
Okay. We have had one amendment and we've had a motion and a second on the policy that is before us, which really adds this section B to the current policy. Is there any further discussion on this topic? Okay. Mr. Minor.
Thank you. Well, we, we create this policy. And then what we, I guess, refer to as protocols come from the administration or from the schools. That's my vague interpretation. And I guess the superintendent is saying, okay, you know, that, that's really what we're doing. And, you know, board member Dr. Hopes, you know, brings up, okay, what about, you know, outside? Now, I don't think our policy addresses outside. Am I wrong?
The policy that we're voting on tonight does not, the operating protocols that we voted on previously do. And they sent them to us via email today, which I trust the district will be updating those. And that's why they sent them to us.
Well.
But the policy that is before us tonight does not address any of those things. It only really addresses enacting a mask or not. That is what is really before us in our policy tonight.
Well, the issue about outdoors, I, I don't remember seeing in any of the football games of our schools, anybody out on that field, you know, wearing a mask. Maybe there was, I didn't see that. There's a lot of physical contact in particularly, you know, football. I don't think anyone believes, other than, you know, the helmet and this mask is part of a helmet, that they should be wearing a mask like I have on. I don't think that's being done. I want to be corrected if I'm wrong. Does anybody want to correct me on that?
Playing football, they don't have to wear a face mask. If you're a spectator in the stand, they are required to wear a mask as a spectator, yes.
Well, that, that's what, you know, I've done. But our, our policy doesn't specifically address that. Dr. Hopes brought up about, you know, a, a student apparently running around a track. Dr. Hope brought up about, you know, a, a student, apparently, running around a track. It's not the intention of this board that any student or staff member has to wear a mask running around a track or playing tennis. What about, you know, volleyball? Is it required there? I don't think so. Maybe we have to, do we have to have a yes and no and all of that to kind of explain what is, you know, to be kind of standard, you know, protocols for activities in, in this school district? Maybe so. Maybe that's an administration, you know, you know, function. I think the administration that gets the idea of where the board members here feel is reasonable and not reasonable for implementation of the policy that we're voting on now. So, I, I, I think the, I'm a little bit lost, frankly. But we've already adopted a, you know, the policy in which we're going to look at at least every, within every 90 days, which I think is great and that was unanimous. What, you know, adjustments in the policy, it, it seems like the chair is suggesting, you know, some ways to adjust the policy after we've adopted it. Am I correct on that or no?
Not exactly, no. What's before us tonight is our policy. I have made my suggestion about the policy. That was a motion and a second to revisit it every 90 days. The other items that I brought up were items that were in our, were in the protocols, which was a separate document that we approved when we first approved this policy. And the protocols mirrored the CDC recommendations. And there were revisions sent to us this afternoon.
Okay, I haven't seen them. Now I get.
That's why I read it out loud, because I wanted to make sure that, in case somebody hadn't read them, that, because it was sent to us this afternoon, that I stated them. I had already written how I would like to have changed them. And then I saw the revisions and it basically achieved what I wanted to achieve, but I, I felt that mine was simpler. And so I just wanted to read those out because there isn't another time that the board can really discuss this topic.
Okay. Well, the public hasn't seen those either.
What?
The public hasn't seen those suggested.
They have not seen the suggested, that's why, also why I read it out. But it is the, this, the, the document that I read from is posted on the school district's website that any parent can review. And whenever a parent emails me with questions, I send them a link to that protocol document so they can see it and see what, what is up there from the district's website. It is on, is, is not on the, it's, it's on a link from the front page. So, that is not something that the board is voting on tonight. It is something that the district, since it's protocols that they typically do in-house, it is something the district will be working on. But I wanted to state my revisions since it was on this topic.
Okay, suggestions to the administration.
Yes.
Got a fair way. Okay, thank you.
But did I clarify that?
Yeah.
Sorry if I was confusing.
Okay, I think you have good suggestions. And I, I think the administration's going to massage it a little bit based upon the statements that have been made here tonight by board members.
I believe so.
Okay.
Okay. Now that there's been thorough discussion on the policy, I'm going to call a vote. It has, as it has already been amended, all those in favor of policy, of activating section B of policy 8450, as it has been amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, Madam Superintendent, I'm going to move on to approval of adoption of proposed changes to policy 1209 absenteeism, policy 3209 absenteeism, policy 4209 absenteeism, policy 8415 emergency and crisis management. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval to amend policy 1209-absenteeism, policy 3209 absenteeism, policy 4209 absenteeism, and policy 8415 emergency and crisis management.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Minor.
Second.
Second by Reverend Golden. Is there any discussion? Oh, wow. These are really hot topics. You know, these were, these were very minor changes to these policies. Seeing no discussion, we will vote. All those in favor of the proposed changes to the policies that Madam Superintendent read into the record, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, that concludes our section from our public hearing. So I am actually going to move back up now, because that was a time certain item. I'm going to move back up now to approval of the minutes. That's where we were at when we stopped for our public hearing. So, I'm going to ask Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation for the approval of the minutes?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the Board Workshop and Shade Meeting, October 22, 2020, 9:00 a.m. Also, the School Board and Regular Meeting and Public Hearing, October 27, 2020, 5:45.
Moved.
I got a motion. Is there a second for approval of the minutes?
Second by Minor.
A second by Mr. Minor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that pa, ma, motion passes unanimously. We will move on to the consent agenda. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend all matters listed under the consent for approval.
Is there a motion?
So move by Minor.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Minor and a second by Vice Chair Kennedy. Is there any public comment?
Oh, um.
Because it's not, because it's not on my.
I've got a couple on new business, but that's it.
Okay. Then I will call the vote. We are on the consent agenda. Mr. Minor, did you hit your speaker button?
Yeah, I, I thought I was moving with my butt.
Oh, yeah, it's not up there. It's not up there.
Okay.
So, we are on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. We will move forward to new business, non-consent items. Item number one, approval of the budget amendments for September 2020. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of budget amend, budget amendments for September 2020.
So move.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Minor and a second by Vice Chair Kennedy. And I hear that we have public comment.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Glenn, you signed up for, you signed up for new business, but didn't note which item under new business? Four, got it.
Three and four.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. We're good.
Okay. Then, is there any discussion on the budget amendments for September 2020? Okay, hearing none, I will call the vote. And it is my understanding Dr. Hope's is back in the back room. Is he on teams? Okay, great. So, all those in favor of the budget amendments for September 2020, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Move forward to item number two. Approval of the year-to-date financial statements through September 30, 2020. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the year-to-date financial statements through September 30, 2020.
So move, just for approval.
Okay. I've had a motion by Mr. Minor and a second by Vice Chair Kennedy. And I have on my computer that there is public comment for this item.
Mr. Nelson.
Passing it out. My, my original presentations was about the one sheet that you have with the budget at the beginning of the year and about, about the $300,000, $300 million fraud that's going on. So I decided to look at your monthly sheet. And if you look at my last sheet, it's a copy of, of the, actually, it's next to the last sheet, it's of your page two, which I'm referring to. I'll make a notice, the causes fraudulent numbers for the district, sheet one, two, and three, I look at three different versions that you have for dealing with inter-fund transfers. And you notice the layout is different because I add your starting fund balance. Otherwise, these numbers are not mine. They're years off of your sheet, number two, and individual sheets. And you look at the four sheets, if you look at the ones in the squares, there's different numbers how you handle the transfers out. Either the positive number, negative number, or nega, or a posi, a blank number. All different. Only two is correct. You handled correctly, according to your bet. So I wanted to show the, number one, the revenues, total revenues agree, all three sheets. Total expenditures all re, agree. Ending fund balances all agree. But it gets to four now. Other financing sources on page two doesn't agree with your capital funding. Doesn't agree. And total expenditures and transfers on page seven doesn't agree with your page two. This causes the, the part of the fraud, it continues. This causes an inflated amount of district revenue of $21 million so far this year. And if you continue to do this this way, next month, somebody more, because you're going to transfer more. You're creating an artificial revenue streak you don't have. And yet, you have page two says, inter-fund transfers does not affect the revenue for the district. Yet this does. It does affect it. And every month, this item two item, your statement is false because they don't. And the only reason I do this is because I look at your page two as a summary. Yet when I add up on pages one, two, and three, they're different. Why the hell is that? Why do you have to inflate? And the only answer I got from you, everybody's doing it. I'll look at your school. If other schools said, hey, we're not going to take care of handicapped children, are you going to do that? Obey the law and be truthful and give us exact numbers, not fake.
Thank you. Is there any other? Okay. We've had a motion and a second for the year-to-date financial statements through September 30, 2020. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We will vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We will move forward to approval of the resolution 2020-10 regarding the University of South Florida, USF College of Education. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the resolution 2020-10 regarding the University of South Florida College of Education.
Moved by Minor to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Minor and a second from Vice Chair Kennedy. Is there any discussion? Mr. Minor, you made the motion, I just want to give you the opportunity.
I'll give Dr. Hope's the opportunity to first comment on it.
Okay, Dr. Hope's.
Thank you. Well, I will tell you, I appreciate the, the motion and, and as a three-time, three degrees from the University of South Florida and serving on the Board of Trustees, the, the board, and I've discussed this with a couple of, they have totally lost their way. To, to think that the region's preeminent state university, an education institution, would care so little about the quality of the education in our region that they would shut down an undergraduate college of education when every school district in the region has a shortage of teachers and educators? And for a response that you can get your teaching degree at Hillsboro Community College or St. Pete College? No offense to those state colleges, but they're not a research university. And the thought of insinuating that they should dummy down the education that's delivered in this region, I find offensive. And, and after this, I, I plan on, you know, as a faculty member, I'm going to have that conversation with the president, one way or the other. Because if you go back and look at the video of my testimony at USF Sarasota Manatee around the consolidation, I specifically addressed the need for the university to focus on at least ensuring that we have the workforce in our region in order to thrive. And I, I asked your support. And I think this is one of those causes that we need to be very vocal about. So much so that I, I will seek out legislators who will sponsor legislation to mandate that a state public university must include a college of education. I mean, it, it, and I appreciate the, the superintendent and the other district superintendents, and I, I ask for your support. Thank you.
And I want to apologize because we made our motion or second, and I believe Mr. Gibilina said he wanted to speak on item three and item four. So, Mr. Gibilina, if you want to come up and speak on the, this item.
For the record, Glenn Gibilina. So, new business, USF, you know, the, the horse is out of the barn. We should have been having this conversation a year ago. It's, it's unbelievable that the USF didn't, didn't consult the surrounding districts, Sarasota, Manatee, when they 86'd this program. So, the communication, the lack of communication between the USF and the local school districts is unbelievable. Are you telling me everybody here didn't know they were going to 86'd that program? We're just finding out about it now. So there's nobody that's engaged with the, with these education people that said, you know what, we need, we need to keep this on here. Their decision was based on, in 2009, they had 2,800 undergraduates and 22 graduate students. By the fall of 2019, they had 1,600 undergraduates and 1,300 graduates. And last year, it went down to 1,500 and 800. So I get, I get it, they're going to private schools, they're getting their education elsewhere. But damn, we got 800 students and we can't keep a class here? I, I am dumbfounded that the communication between our educational system, which by the way, we pay, that nobody, nobody from, from, from USF contacted the superintendent or the chair or the public, for that matter. That should have been a school board decision, should have been open to the public, and you guys should have attended it. That's your job, is to keep tabs on how we're going to educate. We need teachers here. And we just got blindsided. It's just unconscionable that the horse is out of the barn. And, you know, this should have been, this should have been cut off months ago. I don't know when this, this harebrained guy figured this out or who, who he ran it by. But him to make a catastrophic failure decision like that without consulting the surrounding schools puts a hardship on the students here that are trying to get their education. And maybe the rest of their classes are here locally and now they have to go to St. Peter, Hillsborough. It's just, it's just insane about that. So, I'll write a letter as well. The other thing I want to talk about is today, you guys got $3 million from the Board of County Commissioners, $3 million bucks.
This is, that's the next item.
Oh, I thought you said 10 and 4, 3 and 4.
We're only on number 3 right now.
Okay, well, good, I'll keep going then.
Get another three minutes.
Number 4, you'll be right back.
Okay, so, all right, so again, it's inconceivable that you guys got sucker punched by a higher education when we're in the education. We should all be in the same boat. We should all be on the same page. You guys ought to be getting the newsletters. You should be getting their, their Board of County, uh, your, their, their Board meeting minutes.
Their trustees found about it in the newspaper. If I were a trustee, I'd fire the president.
Well, see, that's, 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 you know, school teacher lives matter.
They do.
That's what I'm going to say about that. So, needs to be some, am I going to go sit down, come back, or what?
Go sit down.
Just be a minute.
When we, when we get to number 4, we'll call you back.
Oh, I thought we were at that. Oh, I thought that was next.
We have to vote on this.
We've got to vote on this.
Oh, okay.
Vote on this. Now we have a new law office of Minor, Golden, Di, Tittlebaum, Gibilina.
Of Council.
He's an intern. Your name is not on the bill to get. I'm sorry, Mr. Gibbelina.
He's the bag man.
Okay. So, we are on the approval of the resolution. We've heard public comment. We've heard from Dr. Hope's. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none. It has had a motion and a second? Yes, yes, it has had a motion and a second. Yes, Minor and Kennedy. Okay. It has had a motion and a second? All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. We are on to item number four. Approval to apply, accept, expend COVID-19 special funding from the state of Florida not to exceed $10 million. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval to apply, accept, and expend COVID-19 special funding from the state of Florida not to exceed $10 million.
Moved by Minor to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Mr. Minor and a second from Vice Chair Kennedy, and I believe we have public comment.
All right, for the record, Glenn Gibbelina. Norm, I'm going to put this on the overhead for you. All right, can you, can you see that there? Thank you very much. So, at today's Board of County Commissioners meetings, they gave you $3 million. So, my suggestion is, how are you going to spend it? Where are you going to spend it? And is there going to be any citizen overview? Here's my thoughts. Somewhere in this agenda today, you okayed a cleaning contract, I think for around $700,000, including not only the labor but the supplies. Now, you know as well as I do, those supplies are going to be, could be covered by this $3 million. Not only that, you should be never be doing a contract where the product is included because we save the sales tax, just like we we save the sale tax on all the building materials that we buy. You're tax exempt. So anywhere you can cut costs on on supplies, you should be buying the supplies direct and not tying into the contract. So what are we going to do with this $3 million? We knew it was coming. So is there going to be a workshop on it? Is it just going to go in in the black hole of general funds and never be seen again? I mean, we want accountability on this. So we, I want to know what safeguards that the school district has to put, to to let us know about about how you're going to spend that money. And part of that comes from your bylaws. I have it right here. Just want to reiterate it for you. That the board declares and hereby reaffirms its intent to maintain open communication with citizens of the district. The board shall keep them informed of progress and problems of the district. And the citizens shall be encouraged to bring their thoughts and concerns. That's in your bylaws. Norm, did you see that? I'm going to send you a copy of it, okay? All right. So, we only hear good things from here. I mean, we, tell us, tell us really, I mean, let's clear the page and tell us what's really going on on PeopleSoft. You know, we we got a new dashboard thing. I never, it sounded like the same song and dance that we heard from PeopleSoft.
Gibbelina, this is only about this $10 million, right?
Oh, okay, $10 million.
You can bring that up at public comment later, but.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be, all right. So, again, I think there should need, there needs to be some accountability on the $3 million bucks. It's a golden goose for you. You weren't, you weren't planning on it. That was something that.
I'm going to ask the audience to please remain quiet.
That was something that, that the county, that was something that the county conveyed to you. You'd have to, you'd have to pay those costs anyways. So I think we we can spend that money more wisely with with some citizen oversight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We've had a motion by Mr. Minor and a second by Vice Chair Kennedy. We've had public comment. Is there any discussion? Yes, Vice Chair Kennedy.
Yeah. In that spirit, Superintendent Saunders, could you talk about what our plan is basically for the, for these funds?
Yes, this is different than the conversation of the $3 million that we submitted for the CARES Act with the county. So I would like to clarify that a little bit for Mr. Glenn Gibbelina. There have been a number of CARES Act funding sources. This one, for us to be able to qualify, it's just for reimbursement of any type of PPE expenditure. So it was very, very specific on how we could utilize those funds. So we were able to, if we've already spent some that would qualify for that, we have to submit our receipts, and they will give us reimbursement up to that $3 million. So that is not discretionary. This pot of money, we are submitting a request to the state because the state still has CARES funding. We were contacted as possibly being a pilot district of trying out some new PPE type of equipment that are air filters, air filtration, and different type of devices. So the first step that we're going to have to do is to apply to see if the state will give us those extra dollars. So they would be earmarked for that particular purpose. Once we get the money, we will then come back to the board with consideration and conversation of agencies that would fit those guidelines, and then those dollars would be spent specifically for that. But it would be a new type of equipment that is supposed to really help with the safety of the molecules for COVID, et cetera. So that's what we're looking, air filtration and those type of devices.
So, I mean, to paraphrase, and if I'm hearing you right, this this $10 million is strictly for air quality and for.
Yes, yes. That that's specifically what that part is. But I appreciate you asking me because I did want to clarify what Mr. Glenn Gibbelina asked so that he knows that those dollars are already earmarked, and it's only reimbursement that we qualify for. So we may not get $3 million, but we are eligible up to $3 million.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Did Dr. Connor sign up for public comment?
Point of order on that now. I have written down to comment on this.
Dr. Connor, I just had you under public. No, I've got you, but it was just under public comment?
I'm sorry.
It was under general public comment, not this specific item?
Do you wish to speak on this item instead of public comment?
Yeah, you can, you can come speak now.
Yes, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent and Board, I'm Dr. Connor, been a citizen of this community many, many years. As I had seen this coming up, I tried to familiarize myself to understand what this was all about. And my findings have suggested, because this school district has been a very leadership district in the state, that the governor and the Secretary of Education had requested of the school district that we apply for funds. And it's mainly funds that, as I understand it, are for us to study ways we can improve the environmental safety in our schools. And with that as an assumption, I I strongly request you all to approve this and applaud Dr. Hope's for showing a lot of leadership to potentially bring $10 million to our district to have us help study how we can improve the entire environment for our, for our students and teachers. So I'm very much in favor of this.
Thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none. There has been a motion and a second. All those in favor to apply, accept, and expend COVID-19 special funding from the state of Florida not to exceed $10 million, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, we will move forward to new business. This is, comes without a superintendent recommendation, so I will need a motion from a, from a a board member for the acceptance of the resignation of an audit committee member.
Moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Hope's and a second from Vice Chair Kennedy. Is there any public comment?
What do I have?
It's on my computer that we do, so I just was curious. Well, you know, sometimes my computer does a funky thing where it puts people's names. It says Mr. Gibbelina on my computer.
He was for item number, he had signed up for item number four, but we don't have anybody signed up under this item.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, just to be clear, this is for the, the.
Audit committee.
It's not on my screen. It just says acceptance, resignation of an audit committee member, but this is for Mrs. Foreman.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And there has been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. And the next session was a public hearing. We held the public hearing, so we will move forward to public comment. And Vice Chair Kennedy, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Okay, I think everybody in public comment has been here before, so I won't read the whole blurb. But as always, please leave your mask on when you come up to speak. You have three minutes, and I think everybody knows the rules. So we'll get started. Brandy Bright? No, thank you, thank you. Mrs. Weber?
Good evening, board members. My name is Sheri Weber. Good evening, parents. I want to let you know all that we feel all the feelings you are going through right now. When we started this journey, the six of us felt like we were trapped in a nightmare. It is indeed a nightmare, but I am here to shed light on a miracle for you all. The Hope Scholarship, let me tell you a little bit about this gem. Principals and the school board want you to believe that it's only for student-on-student bullying, but I am here to tell you that this is not true. This is available to any family with kids in K through 12 of any race, gender, or class. Florida statute 1002.40 states all school personnel in Florida have a responsibility to notify families of the scholarship. No substantiation is required. No substantiation is required. What are the qualifications? It takes, if it takes place at any school-related or school-sponsored program or activity, riding in a school bus or waiting at the school bus stop, if a student or district employee with intent to demean, dehumanize, embarrass, or cause physical harm to another student, you qualify. This includes and not limited to teasing, social exclusion, sex ed, that you can't opt out of, may I remind you, if you're not given that option, religious, racial harassment, threat, or intimidation, and so forth. It does not have to be student-on-student bullying. It does not have to be student-on-student bullying. You can take your child out of the public school system and place them into private school, or you can choose a school outside of your zoning area, and they will pay you $750 for transportation. The school, the scholarship will remain with the child until graduation, or you place your child back into the public school system. It only takes one incident to happen from a student or an employee to qualify for the Hope Scholarship. Parents, you have options for your children and ways to get them into a safer and better environment. If you are a parent that has a child or children that are having issues in school from other students or employees, call and ask why you have not been given the option to use the scholarship. Hold them accountable to the Florida statute 1002.40. And I just like to say that it is critical as a parent that we have choices. You were correct earlier about having school choices. But we have choices to have a brook, brook, brick-and-mortar school for our child. We have choices to send them or not send them. And the damage that it's doing to our children every single day, as parents, we see the damage. You don't see the damage. Our kids come home crying, upset. They have blisters on their lips. They have issues at school with friends. And there is bullying going on because of the mask. It doesn't end here. It will continue to happen. And when that happens, who is going to be liable? Who, you? Or are we just going to have to sit and fight for our kids every single day? Because sadly, of the situation that's going on right now in this room and the continuous meetings we have, that is what we're going to have to do.
Nicole McFoy? Mrs. Hanson?
Hey, Allison Hanson. I'm very disappointed. I'm disappointed that our elected officials have decided it's their right to parent us. Disappointed that you feel it's your right to take away our rights to choose what is best for the health of our own children or for employees to choose for themselves. I'm saddened and angered that the board's help has turned to hurt with many of our kids. Your efforts to defend them, which is good at first, but they've begun to damage. And you refuse to acknowledge that. I think it's outrageous and very offensive that you would dare to say you care more for the safety and well-being of our children than we do. If we were worried that they were going to die, we would not send them to school and not trust a piece of cloth to save their lives. The fact that every school has been implementing the policy differently, some haven't been more restrictive, like some have been outside, some have been less restrictive, and we're still all okay. That should tell you something. It's ridiculous that we seem to think we need to alter the whole way we live because of this virus. We go around every day with millions of viruses and bacteria and microbes in our bodies, and that's part of being human, and it's essential to life. It always has been this way, but now we're treating healthy people as if they're a walking disease that we have to avoid. When is this going to stop? When will public departments of health start empowering people with good information on how to get healthy, stay healthy, and support their immune systems rather than fill them with fear or injections? If you're so concerned with keeping kids healthy, why are things like Cheetos and Cocoa Puffs being fed to them at school being justified as healthy snacks and food because they have whole-grain corn in them? Maybe focus on that area more and not on muzzling our kids' beautiful faces. My husband runs restaurants. The restaurant employees are exposed to literally thousands upon thousands upon thousands of people every week. They touch their cups and their silverware and their plates and their napkins with people spit on them. They breathe the same air, and they are fine. There is no more illness in his restaurants this year than any previous year. How is it they can be exposed to so much all the time, and yet they're okay? And why can people get into hospitals without wearing a mask? One of the ladies that isn't here tonight had to go into the ER with her daughter today. The nurses were all wearing masks under their chins. They didn't have to wear masks to go in. That's okay, but our kids can't get into a school without a mask? Yeah, it is deadly for some, but that's for a very tiny segment of the population, not for the vast majority of children. So why in the world are we treating every healthy human being as though they were sick? Why are we masking our children? In your protocols, it says teachers can wear clear face coverings but to be sure that they don't cause difficulty with breathing or overheating, and we're not affording that same care to our children. I can't sit by and watch my children suffer anymore. They do come home crying because of issues relating to masks. I can't participate in a district that doesn't acknowledge the hurt that is being done at its command. I will have to remove my children from school if things are not done to fix these abuses going on. Your protection is now putting at risk, and I do not consent.
Aaron, Aaron Booley of Beulah. Come back to her. Mr. Bowman? Jeremiah, that just came out. I was like, wait, is it Bowman?
I'm sorry?
I think I said your last name wrong.
Bowman.
Oh, I said it right. Okay, sorry. Mr. Bowman, the floor is yours. You have three minutes. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Hello, I am Jeremiah Bowman, Director of Bance Braden River High School. And thank you, Board Chair Messenger, Vice Chair Kennedy, fellow board members, Superintendent Saunders. I am here tonight to say thank you to the watchdog. Piggybacking off of what Mrs. Messenger started. For over 40 years, Attorney Dave "Watchdog" Minor has been an advocate for children in Manatee County. Dave has served in many important leadership roles in the community, and since 2012 has served on the Manatee County School Board. Dave is leaving the board as the senior member where he served as board chair, was instrumental in restoring the district's financial stability, and provided leadership in guiding the district to its highest academic rating ever. Dave is a Marine Vietnam War veteran, and through his service to country and community, he has dedicated his life to the purpose of providing children with equitable access to high-quality education. His experience and credibility are invaluable. Dave has been a fantastic school board member, but even more importantly, Dave is a trusted friend and has always been willing to listen to the concerns of his constituents. Dave's constant and endless energy is some. Dave's constant and endless energy is something that we can all admire. There are too many accomplishments to list, but from saving McKelvey Park at Miller Elementary, to getting crosswalk lights installed at Manatee High, to being a leader in passing the One Mill that brought millions into the district, to bringing the health concerns of the Old King Middle School to light, to advocating for our music programs at the beginning of this school year, to always giving a voice to those who may not be heard, Dave has not always taken the politically safe path, but he has always taken the path that benefited the students of Manatee County. Dave and I met a couple years ago on the Save Our Schools campaign. I volunteered to help put out a couple signs. I was willing to help, and that's what I was told anyway. I ended up driving a truck around the county and digging holes and putting up ten-to-twelve-foot signs. It was an adventure, but Dave was there, getting dirty in the trenches with us, putting up signs, shaking hands, and taking a beating for us, taking a beating for supporting the One Mill with everything he had. Through that process, I learned about the watchdog and his ever-burning desire to see the school district succeed. This board can learn from his dedication and advocacy for the school district. Dave has been our champion in private and public, and he will be missed.
Thank you.
I am proud and honored to call Dave Watchdog Minor a friend of mine, and I would like to publicly thank you for your service and dedication to the school district of Manatee County. Thanks are not enough, but thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Corey Bernhardt? Corey, could you say your name properly?
Bernhardt.
Bernhardt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Madam Chair Messenger, Vice Chair Kennedy, and Board Members Superintendent Saunders. My name is Corey Bernhardt, I'm a kindergarten teacher at Harvey Elementary School. I've been teaching for ten years now, this is my fifth year here in Manatee County. Um, I'm here today to do the same and to give my sincere gratitude to Dave Watchdog Minor. For people like me, classroom teachers, um, I speak, hopefully for all of us when we say, "We are so thankful for everything you have done for us, for our students, and for our community." Since I began teaching in Manatee County in 2016, I've experienced Dave's complete dedication to his teachers, to the students, and to the community members that he serves. As a classroom teacher, I am constantly reminded that my part of a child's education happens within the classroom. However, your part as Board Members happens outside of the classroom, and not only does it happen outside of the classroom, sometimes it's behind the scenes. A few years ago, Dave Watchdog Minor spearheaded the One Mill referendum to, uh, to secure supplemental funds for educators. As you know, this was no easy task. I was voluntold by Dave that I'd be driving a twenty-six-foot U-Haul around Manatee County to help put up ten-to-twelve-foot signs, digging holes as well. These were vote yes signs for the One Mill referendum. We did it barely, but we did it. Dave spearheaded this campaign, he was the one who helped us, the classroom teachers, and to help our students. He was there for every minute, every day, through the blood, the sweat, but he was always there. He was there for us, he was there for our students, he was there for our community. This example is just one, but it's a mighty one, of the service that Mr. Minor has accomplished during his tenure as Board Member. And as a Manatee County School Teacher, I've seen him and experienced his welcomeness at the beginning of the school year. He attends numerous football games in one evening. He is a true and advi, uh, is a true and advocating supporter of the arts, and for that, we are forever grateful. You will be missed, Dave, we love you very much.
Love you.
I'm proud to call you a good friend. We've come to get to know you over these past few years. You're not just a Board Member, but you're a true champion for educators, and we thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Glenn?
Yes, Dave, good job. Uh, well, I guess, uh, I'll start out with the survey. We did have forty-one percent that were against the mask, so why don't you just open up a middle school and elementary school and a high school with no mask? Forty-one percent of the students don't want it, nor the parents. That's my first spin on that. Uh, the second thing is the surplus property. I didn't have a chance to speak last time, but, uh, you guys blow out, uh, uh, equipment that's only three or four years old, and I had an opportunity to speak to Dr. Hopes about this, and appreciate that. That, you, you marked it obsolete. I have that exact same machine. I run five monitors off it all day long for the last four years. It's a workhorse. So when you, when you phase that machine out and you call it obsolete, I'd sure like to know how is it obsolete? It's one of the best HP workhorse, uh, uh, mainframes they make. And my second thing is what do you do with them? And at least the county, when they get surplus property, they pull in all the nonprofits and say, "Hey, do you need any computers? Bring us your 501(c)(3)" instead of scrapping them, we'll give it to them. So my question is, what do you do with the computers after that? Bylaws? Here's your bylaws, I'll bring that up now. Maintain open communication with citizens of the district, the board shall keep them informed of progress and problems. You don't tell us about the problems. Give you an example, uh, your finance committee, I sat in for three hours on their Zoom meeting, they were going through documents and presentations, the public had zero, zero information. That meeting was done in the shade. Now, Doug Wagner did reach out to me, and, uh, he's hopefully gonna steer it in the right direction. I'm not gonna file a sunshine, uh, grievance, although well within my rights. Uh, I'll give that respect to, to Mary Foreman and Doug on that one, but I suspect you've been doing that for quite a long. They fall under the same guidelines as I do on the Housing Board Committee. We all follow under the same sunshine laws. So hopefully you can straighten that out. And my other thing is, um, the dashboard, uh, this Indazell dashboard, uh, it's, it was the same song and dance we heard from PeopleSoft. So, didn't we have at one time Micro, Mi, uh, Microsoft dashboard? So I'm a little confused there. So I still haven't had the numbers on, on the PeopleSoft, and that's something the citizens should be aware of, of, of the cost overruns. What are, what is the attorneys costing us to, to litigate that? These are all things that catastrophic failures in PeopleSoft and their contract and millions of dollars overrun, I think the citizens are entitled to know, and I think this board should be up kept from the Finance Committee on, on the losses and the problems of that program. Listen, good, bad, and ugly, we wanna hear it all. Thank you.
Pat, uh, Pat Barber?
My name's Pat Barber, I'm the President of the Manatee Education Association. First, I'd like to say tomorrow is Veterans Day, and I would like to thank all veterans for their service, and I would like to thank Mr. Minor for his service as a veteran, and also as a veteran school board member. He has served on the school board for twelve years, but he has advocated for public education for much longer than that. He served on the Saks of all of his children's schools. He has advocated for public education for the whole time his children were in school. He's probably the only person in this room that ever drafted legislation that demanded that parents have full transparency on FCAT, and that legislation was proposed in the state legislature. That was Mr. Minor. So he has a long history of advocating for public education, and for parents' rights, right to know, and for opposing high-stakes testing in public schools. So we have a lot to thank Mr. Minor for, for his service on the board and prior to coming on the board. I have come to know him sitting in these seats when he was coming on this side of the microphone, of the DAS, and talking to school board members for many years, and also as a sitting board member, so I do wanna say-
Thank you.
-thank you. Thank you for advocating for teachers, for students, for parents, and, um, I know you're not gonna stop just because you're not gonna be sitting in that chair, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Uh, Mrs. Mendel?
Uh, let's see, just a couple things. In regard to the USF contract and the closing of the Public College of Education, there's a majority of colleges of education across the country that are closing. Enrollment at USF in the education school is down by forty percent, if not more by now. When you make it a hostile work environment to teach in the state of Florida, you tie teacher pay to a single test score, and you test and punish continuously, and you deny teachers the right to teach, they're not gonna go out of their way to get a degree in education. They're going to leave. There is not a teacher shortage in the state of Florida, it is an exodus. There are thousands, tens of thousands of us, like myself, who refuse to go back into a public classroom in Florida. Anyway, so, as far as USF, they're making a good business decision. If the numbers are down by forty percent and you make teaching hostile, kids are not gonna sign up to teach. Second question, Inzada, we had a wonderful dashboard on Microsoft. Dr. Shereen Gibson worked tirelessly last year. There was nothing wrong with the dashboard that we had, but suddenly we go into a brand-new ed-tech company and spend how much? I mean, I, it, it's on the agenda on, on the computer, it's not here. I think it was a hundred thousand dollars for a brand-new dashboard? Why do we change ed-tech companies like we change rolls of toilet paper? I mean, it's crazy, the amount of money that we spend on ed-tech a, and, and, and data collection in this district. Let's see, oh, I gotta get my phone. Then the issue, uh, teachers out of field. There's a ridiculous amount of numbers of teachers who are out of field in this district. I know for a fact that you have teachers working with non-verbal children with autism, whose teachers do not have a degree in, in, in special education and have no coursework in autism spectrum disorder disabilities. So, th, this fascinates me, that you've, you've changed the policy, you've reduced the requirements, you no longer require certification, and it's be, it's, it's beyond saddening. And we are going to see the repercussions and the quality instruction that we have here in this district. Last thing I'll read is this quote, "There comes a moment when you realize that what you're advocating for is more than just accommodations, you're really advocating for someone's quality of life. That's the moment when you realize you won't give up." We are continually getting more cases of students who are being put into horizons, they're without their due process rights, and their IEPs are no better than a, a, a blank piece of paper. So I will not give up. Linda Montalbano will not give up, and we will continuously advocate for the students that you, uh, continuously move to alternative settings with, uh, in violation of their federal due process rights. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Jones?
Rodney Jones, um, I'm requesting investigations, and I'm gonna do them verbally first. Um, I'd like a full investigation, Gina, into what happened last week between this week, 'cause obviously there was some type of category failure by the school district that you would do this much of a reversal over, you know, school board meetings, so you had promised to find out, we, the community would like a full report, uh, we'd like a report on the laws and the violations that, uh, came about, and also what liability that presents to the district, because Ja, Mr. Gribalina doesn't plan on filing suit, but we do as a community, uh, because that was not the first time I've sat outside those meetings for as long as three hours, waiting to get in here. And then we have this. So somebody's not doing their job, and there needs to be some accountability, so we're expecting you to do that and present that to the community. You work for us, we don't work for you. Do your job. And also, Mr. Golden went, took the time to try to defend his lying ass. He, he went, he went-
Okay.
I'm sorry, I apologize, it just naturally comes out when I see him. You took the time to look through twenty-two emails defi, defining every reference I made to my blindness and diabetes, but you ne, made no reference of the twenty-two complaints that were attached to that. So I want a, I want a full investigation on the, on the due process that blacks are receiving here in the school district when we make complaints. Other people make complaints and they, theirs get heard. He said twenty-two different complaints that I sent, that I referenced my eyes, my eyes and my diabetes, and not one investigation by Ms. Saunders. So I don't, the disparity in the way blacks are treated here is disgusting. You guys treated us like dogs last week. Seniors and pregnant people standing up outside, couldn't hear, couldn't see the TV, couldn't hear. People had all kind of disabilities that you guys had them waiting outside like dogs. And now this week, wow, no social distancing, and Gina, you made a comment about the civic center, we got schools here, we got football stadiums, we got cafeterias where we can social distance. You guys are incompetent, and I don't know what your risk management is doing, but you're not assessing the situation, you guys are walking into a blind rage of liability. And we want a very transparent process on this superintendent. You would not railroad us again with Ms. Saunders. I advise you at home, December fourth, 2018, the workshop, if you wanna see a railroading to get a school, uh, superintendent into a school district, that was it. This lady has never competed for a job at executive, um, level, she was given everyone by Dr. Green, and then you guys railroaded us last time. We want a full transparent process like other school districts get when they, they need to replace a superintendent. She violated a contract. Dave Minor in the debate didn't even know that, um, those weren't allegations, those are actual findings by the Florida Department of Education. You guys are a joke, an embarrassing joke. Don't stop me, you didn't stop anybody else.
I let everybody finish their last sentence, and then I said, "Thank you."
You gotta not be ashamed of yourself, man.
Hi, Jaycee.
Steven McAvitt, oh, Steve, come on.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Saunders, I stand here today to, um, thank Dave Minor for all these, um, years of service. I first met Dave about, um, over twenty years ago, when my son was a Cub Scout, and Dave, uh, was on the same, uh, in the same group. So I know that he's been working for children, for the teachers and the staff of this district, for a long time, advocating for children in every way he can. But he's also, as was stated before, he's a veteran, a Marine, and, uh, I don't know if people know this, but, um, Dave didn't have to go, he had a deferment, he was in college, but, um, he decided that it wasn't fair, it wasn't equitable, that because of his, um, status and privilege, that he had the opportunity to go to college and not have to serve in Vietnam. So he made the decision to enlist, and when he told his father, his father told him he's crazy, and his pair, professors told him he was crazy, they even had him go see a psychiatrist before they'd let him sign the papers. That speaks to the character of this man. And ever since, he's been a perfect example to the children of this county of what it is to work hard, to stand up and to fight for what's right. And I've watched him do that, and, um, he's also like the Energizer Bunny. You know, he comes in here sometimes and it looks like he's falling asleep. Well, if you ever followed him around for a day or two or a week, you'd know why. Just like Corey and Ja, Jeremiah, I was also in those trucks, putting up those signs, digging holes with Dave, um, raising money for the referendum, and, uh, it'd be ten-thirty at night, we'd be putting a sign up, I'd say, "Dave, I gotta go home, man, we gotta put up one more sign," and that's it. One-thirty, I'm finally getting home. So, the next day, he's gotta go to a board meeting. You're wondering why he's yawning. So, I just want to say thank you to Dave. And I just wanted to point out um, that he's served both his country as a veteran. He's served the state as a deputy district attorney. He's been on the Cub Scouts involved with, he was on the SAC committees at um, Miller, correct, and King. He was um, instrumental in proving that King Middle School was a, a sick school uh, because of the mold in there. He did his own private investigation and uh, which led to the new building that King now has. And um, this man is just um, full of dedication and service. He's a man of service and it needs to be recognized and I just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Nicole Lynch?
Thank you, guys.
Uh, Mr. Sullum? Okay, okay. Thank you. Um, that concludes public comment.
Okay, um, then we will move forward with a legal update. Got nothing. From the law offices of Golden Di Tatabon Minor. Um, instructional update, Ms. Yost, is she on teams? Oh, you're right there. I'm so sorry.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Board Members. I have a few items this evening, beginning with um, comments regarding um, the October twenty-seventh board meeting. During that um, public comment of that evening, a good deal of the information shared under public comment regarding Horizons School was inaccurate. Ms. Mendel indicated that they, quote, "are going into courtrooms and are removing children from Horizons," end quote. Not one case has been filed, that has been filed, has gone to a courtroom. The district has been able to resolve every issue. Of the eleven cases mentioned, ten are due process and one is a systemic complaint. Only two involve students at Horizons. One of the systemic complaints was the Horizon students. Six are students that were never being considered for the placement at Horizons. One who had already returned to his zone school after Horizon's placement and one who has been, was reassigned to Horizons last year but had the placement overturned as the school did neglect to provide appropriate due process. The ESE director worked with the parent in February to resolve the issue and the student never attended Horizons. I felt as if it were important to summarize the actions that are taking place. There are due process hearings and there are indeed, there is indeed a systemic complaint and we are moving forward to resolve those with the families. Also wanted to follow up as Ms. Actually, several folks have done, that Veterans Day is tomorrow and we have the day off to celebrate. Several of our schools did indeed have ongoing activities to celebrate veterans at their schools, one of which was Tara Elementary, where their fourth grade students had an outdoor concert. It's extremely patriotic, a wonderful view of um, students at their finest musical um, rendition of tribute to our veterans. Flu vaccines are being offered at all of our schools. Next week, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, there is a schedule for all of our schools and so the immunizations will be offered prior to our Thanksgiving break. Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence, we have two of our lighthouse schools, Tara Elementary School and Braden River Middle School that are being featured in the newsletter from Braden, um, from Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence in this month's newsletter. So, that's quite a tribute to Manatee County as we move forward and feature those two outstanding accomplishments. And in closing, I too would like to congratulate Mr. Minor on the movement ahead and the thanks for all the service that you have offered to the students, staff and community as a member of the board for school district of Manatee County. Thank you, sir. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Operations update?
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair, as members of the board. I have three items. Uh, first of it, first one is to clarify, uh, statements made that currently we have a hundred and eighty-eight teachers out of field. Uh, fifteen percent of them, fifteen percent of a hundred and eighty-eight or twenty-eight are out of field for ESC. You know, in January twenty twenty, uh, pre-pandemic, uh, the state of Florida still had uh, almost twenty-five-hundred unfilled uh, teaching positions. And that's ten percent more than two thousand nineteen. I suspect this January, it'll be even higher. Um, you know, we need teachers and out of field is one way that we can help fill some of our vacancies. So, we want to thank all of our teachers, uh, that their work is so important. Number two, the Early Learning Coalition of Manatee County uh, provided us with sixty-four outdoor hand sanitizer stations. They're the green ones. You may have seen them at our elementary school. Uh, they put them at thirty-one elementary schools plus Lakewood Ranch High School. We have a VPK program there. So, uh, and there, there may be more coming also if they receive additional funding. So, we want to thank them for doing that. They are very nice outdoor stations. Uh, number three, so because of the CARES Act, uh, we received a CARES Act grant at Manatee Technical College. In addition to funding from Career Edge funders, uh, MTC has put together a fast track to in-demand careers with rapid credentialing. So, it starts in January, uh, in a few months and it's really short-term training and it's between five weeks and six months. And I'm gonna read these nine areas uh, that we're offering programs in. Advanced Manufacturing, Cybersecurity, CNC, which is Computer Numerical Controlled Production Specialist, EMT, which is Emergency Medical Technician, Medical Laboratory Assistant, Nursing Assistant, PCT, which is Patient Care Technician, Plodotomy and a Plumber Helper. So, those programs, people can enro- enroll it and it really is a very low cost or no cost uh, through this funding we receive from the state. You know, as we talk about the need for teachers here in Manatee County, you know, we have a huge need in Manatee County for the workforce outside of education. And people who go into these programs, uh, there are jobs available. So, we're trying to get the word out. People can contact Manatee Technical College uh, for more information. Uh, and the last thing I do want to say also following Mrs. Yost is, uh, Mr. Minor, thank you for all your hard work here too. It's been great having you on the board and we wish you very best. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Uh, yes, I also want to recognize our school psychologist uh, because the week of November the ninth through the thirteenth, it is School Psychology Awareness Week. We know in this day and age, with uh, mental health and all the needs that we have, they do a tremendous job of support for our students and uh, they do a lot of work at, at, helping them succeed academically, socially, behaviorally, as well as emotionally. And uh, I know that we could not give them all the services needed without them being staffed in our schools. So, I do want to give a shout-out to them and thank them for all of their hard work. In addition, my last comment is going to be about Mr. Minor, as, as most have already said. Uh, when I arrived in two thousand thirteen, Mr. Minor had just been elected the year before. And as already mentioned, it probably was not our finest time or our finest hour. But over that time, in the eight years that he served, he has so much to be proud of. And I would just like to mention a few of the things that he's been directly involved with. As we all know, he was directly involved with FSBA and how much a part of the Florida School Board Coalition. Uh, he would attend meetings, he was the president, uh, had a great connection with other board members and board presidents and uh, really was an advocate not just for us in this county, but for the whole state for education and public schools. He, of course, was a member of the Chamber of Commerce. He's uh, done a tremendous job. I've, I've heard many of the stories about uh, the millage. And uh, Mr. Minor, I just want to say that even though you're not a board member, we will be calling you when it comes time for the millage. Uh, you will uh, be our top lead, uh, and you will be a major part of that success. I can tell you, uh, working here, whether I was in this role or when I came in over secondary education or even the deputy, I attend many functions, go to many events. I can't remember a time when I've been at an event where Mr. Minor was not also present. Uh, from serving strawberry shortcake at the FFA banquet for Palmetto High School uh, to football games, uh, to just anything, band concerts, uh, which was the last one that we attended together. Uh, he, he was just a true advocate and believed in all the functions and all the schools, whether they were in his region or not, Mr. Minor was there. So, one thing we certainly can say is his love for public education for our students and our community. And we know your work is not finished. So, uh, we appreciate all of your dedication and uh, I know how to find you, Mr. Minor. So, uh, we'll still be in touch. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Hopes?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Watchdog, you and I have come a long ways in three and a half years. Um, and um, I'm gonna personally miss you. We've done, you know, incredible work together. Your, your, you know, service, as other speakers mentioned, your services to the, the community, uh, to your country, uh, to the state. Speak to the man you are and the passions that you bring forth. And as was said earlier, the, the district is in a far better place than it was when you offered up your service as an elected member. But, but, but that journey started way before that, uh, decades before that. And the, the, the children of this community and the members of this community owe you a, a great deal of gratitude for all that you've done. And uh, you will be recruited next year as we move forward with your flagship effort to improve the funding for our teachers, uh, and, and other employees. And uh, I'll miss you. I'll miss you up here. Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Reverend Golden?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. There's always a, a lot more to the doing than there is to the saying. And um, the perspective from here is a lot different than the perspective from out there. Out there, the doing always seems to be easier or better or different. But when you get here and sit here, uh, the, 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 the doing is a lot harder. For one thing, you have to convince two other people to do what you want done. Standing there and making remarks and comments, you don't have to convince anybody else of how right you are or how good you are. And so, I, I want to thank you for um, for being an example to me of endurance. Because sometimes you just have to endure. You have to wait and see. You can't always know that you're right. You can't always know what's best. You just do your best and you, you have been an example to me of what that is. And so, I, I, I will always count it um, among one of the best decisions that I've made in the short time that I've been on this board, was the first decision that I made. And that was to nominate you to serve as the Chair of this board. Uh, there, there have been some times when I wished that I hadn't put that on you. But, but you handled it like a good Marine. Semper Fi. Semper Fi. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, Vice Chair Kennedy?
Thank you. I have, I have very brief comments to make, but Superintendent Saunders, I had a quick question on when um, community and staff could expect a, a storm update?
Yes, uh, I, I realize right before we came down here, there was a, a later update where it turned. So, when we leave here, Mr. Wagner and I are gonna go up there and look at that. We'll have something sent out. Thank you.
A couple of folks asked. Um, I just want to, a quick shout-out, we have three people um, retiring from the district. Um, I, I don't even say Mr. Minor's retiring, but Catherine Houston from Miller L. after twenty-nine years, Miguel Solar at Hale after twenty-six years and Mary Kelly, who is at Palmisola Elementary after twenty-nine and a half years. So, just wanted to um, recognize those three tonight and then finally recognize Mr. Minor. Much as already been said, all of it true. Um, those uh, those millage driving around in a twenty-eight-foot truck on uh, you know, a couple of weekends before the, for the vote are gonna be the next, the next story in the Dave Watchdog Minor canon of uh, legendary tales. But um, David, it really has been an honor to serve with you and um, you know, we've, we have, we have agreed on far, far more than we've disagreed. And even when we've disagreed though, I know that you always come from a place of a love of children and a pride in the school district. And um, I've, I've learned a lot from you in my time on this board. And uh, as, as Pat said, we know you're not going anywhere. And this is just uh, kind of your, your next step into your next education venture. And I look forward to seeing what you, what you have, what you have next.
Thank you, John.
Best of luck to you.
Yep.
Okay, um, I guess it's my turn. I, I think I said a lot earlier, I will truly miss you. I've really enjoyed working with you and um, especially your sense of humor. It's just as dry as mine and uh, I appreciate somebody that gets that. Um, and I'm sure you do too. Um, from when we were debating in two thousand sixteen and we were at a, in a building and you let your rat loose and you had to go search for him to um, um, joking about all, all different kinds of items that you may or may not have eaten. Um, I have always enjoyed uh, you as a person, not just you as a board member.
Thank you.
Um, you, I, I'll give one instance. Uh, when all y'all remember, I was pregnant and when I brought my baby into the world, Mr. Minor actually sent my daughter flowers to congratulate her on being a big sister. And it's those, it's those things that are, just show how good of a person you are. Um, and you were a wonderful board member as well. So, it's really been a joy to work with you. Um, and you will absolutely be missed. Um, but I really want to thank you for all that you've done and all that I know you will continue to do. And uh, with that, I will turn it over to you.
Well, thank you all for all the kind comments that I've heard and um, for allowing me to be with you, uh, to learn from you, uh, to be a part of this great organization. The, I think most of you know I'm a parent and uh, it's, being a parent, being a dad, I've always felt was the best job I've ever had. And I just love being a dad. Uh, for those who think I don't have respect for parenthood, and that, those aren't uh, fully informed people. And I've always looked at it that way. And that's been uh, why I really have dedicated most of my life, you know, to children, be it um, in college, being a Sunday school teacher or tutoring while in college, being a father for four kids, so to speak, in, in college. And there, there was a remark tonight that um, like uh, it, it was something like, "We know better than the parents," uh, or we said something like that. Well, I never said that. I don't think anybody else said that. But I do know the-
But I do know the statement of in loco parentis. And when children are in school, or in a college, whatever that institution is, that institution does have an obligation of protecting each and every child the best they can. Suggesting otherwise is just false. It's a poor excuse for allowing possibly their child to be a danger to other children, and it's just not acceptable. I say that in the role of parents, of how, and many have heard the story, that's really how I got into this, was because of my children. And being concerned about the health of their children, in the schools that they attended, the conditions of the schools, how do you improve the conditions of the schools? I spent thousands of dollars trying to learn about how this thing called public education Requesting documents, paying for those documents, attending school board meetings, committee meetings, meetings outside, where, and I earned a certain amount of fame for taking around a video camera and attending meetings, right here, before we had all of our meetings One meeting was over at Bay Shore, where the superintendent then was talking with people, and I was there, and I think this was about the time I first ran for school board, and I was wearing a campaign T-shirt. Is Mike Barber here? I go, "Hi, Mike. Mike, I think you were there." And the superintendent at that time wasn't happy with my presence. I don't think he liked me videotaping everything he said. And he pointed at me and says, "You gotta take off that T-shirt." And so I did. And then he didn't like what he saw. And so he asked the principal at that time, "Well, go get mine or something else to wear," and I put it on. And I think it was Mike who afterwards asked, "Why'd you do that?" And I remarked, "I gave the shirt off my back for the children of this school district." And I've always felt that way. And it sometimes requires doing what other people just can't afford to do, or not willing to do, don't know how to do. And I didn't know much about what to do myself, but to learn. And by being on a school advisory council, I reached out to other schools and school districts, you know, "How are you guys doing business? You know, what is your role?" And I became a member of a thing called Florida Association of School Advisory Consuls. In fact, I became kind of a region governor of that, to be a force, not just locally, but statewide, and to meet with other organizations that advocated for parents, for kids, for curriculum, for better education locally and statewide. It wasn't just coming up, and "I don't like this," and "You don't care," and all this stuff. How do we change the legislation, the landscape, for education, and the community, and the state? And out of my computer, I put together a thing called Truth in Testing Parents' Right to Know Act, legislation, the statewide education. And basically, it said, you know, "Parents have a right to see the tests by which their children are graded." And the right to know, truth in testing, so there's significant valid questions about the tests that were being given and used. We've had some of that played. So I drafted this, and then it's not just being here, it's talking with legislatures. You gotta, if you want to get a statewide law passed, you gotta talk with legislators, and you gotta get sponsors, and you go to Tallahassee in your lobby, and you do it on your own nickel, which I did. And I got sponsors in the Senate, got sponsors in the legislature, and I went around with others, you know, to these legislative offices, as parents, and attended hearings. And at a hearing of the Senate Education Committee, the governor at that time, who was a good guy, Governor Bush, you know, sent over his top people to say, "This proposed legislation was garbage, basically. You don't need that. Why do they have a right to do it?" And all that kind of stuff. And I got up and I said, you know, "Aren't we all working for the parents and better education? Why don't we have this transparency? We hear that all the time here, right?" And damn, if this committee didn't actually approve it. Now, it didn't pass through the legislature at that time as one piece, but the impact of it was, the message was delivered about how we should go as a state in the direction regarding, you know, testing of kids and parents' right to know. And it was also by virtue of another group, the Florida Coalition for Assessment Reform, which I held, I forget what my title, it was kind of president or something like that. And there was a point in the testing that the state had, where across the state, FCAT scores just really dipped. And it was sort of an embarrassment, you know, to all the people who were running public education up in Tallahassee. Why the heck did that happen? And so, did students get dumber, teachers get worse, or was it the test, or just what? And it was, I got the privilege of appointing someone, you know, to be on that committee, and he was one of these, I forget the title to these people who are experts on testing, but he was from Lake Mary, to be on that committee. And I learned from that, that, you know, testing is a real complicated, you know, science and art, about, you know, where you have, you know, questions and the answers and all of this stuff, and that can affect all the scores. And anyway, I guess, you know, it's, you know, from that, this is all before I was on the school board, that, you know, and I, you know, I ran for school board and finally got elected, and I learned that, you know, from those experiences, you know, the benefits of communication with other school districts, other people there, superintendents, board members, staff members, and you can learn a lot by listening. And that's why I really bit into serving on the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition, where there's some great people, great teachers, great principals, superintendents, and I can compare them with others. And I hope this board will continue its membership, because there's a lot to benefit. The whole idea of, you know, having the provisions in our contract to encourage the solar energy and energy conservation came from my being involved over at the Central Florida Coalition out of Osceola. And I think it was a great benefit, you know, for us, and for me. I know that there's, I think it was the League of Women Voters had a statewide telephone forum, and they asked me if I speak. I didn't know it as a speaker, but I told them about the language we, you know, put into, you know, contracts to make it more efficient in our energy, you know, production, and best to save taxpayers money. And I got, I don't know, it was 10, at least half a dozen calls from around the state. "Okay, what'd you do? How can you get it done?" And it's having that interplay, I think, that really benefits us in particular, and that's most important, but also the state. Well, anyway, that, I'm rambling, but what I'm getting around to is this. I regarded the being on the board kind of in a parental role, and I see the district as a family. And we're all part of it. Everybody here, everybody outside, everybody at the football games, all the teachers, all the bus drivers, everybody, we're part of a family. We're all concerned about, you know, education and our fellow man and fellow students, and to be concerned and love. You know, you put your arms around everybody, and you laugh with them, and applaud with them, and you cry with them. And you go to the funerals, and you let them know, you know, this school district concerns about everybody. I think it was, what was it, two years ago, when, after two students graduated from Southeast High School, and each one of us here shook everybody's hands, all those graduating students. Two weeks after that, two of the students were down in Peru, and they were killed. They're, I think they were going up Mount Ichu Pino or whatever, I'm forgetting certain of my geography, but they were run over by a truck. And I heard about it, and I, "Holy Toledo." I was kind of knocked dead. And they had a, I had a service, and I was chair of board, board chair at that time, so I thought it's important that I be there, and in the front row, and I think everybody was crying. But, you know, just to be there and give everybody who spoke a hug when they came off and cried with the parents, it meant a lot to me. It was saying, you know, "This district really cares about everybody, and we do. This board does." You can say that, gee whiz, you don't really understand. We do. We try. We work our tails off to make it better for every student academically, health-wise, and all of that. And the father came up, and he thanked us, you know, for our caring. And he gave me a picture of the two boys I have at my office now. And I think it's that love, that fellowship, that really makes it work in the community, and really makes the community say, "We're proud of this. We're gonna support this. We're gonna be part of this." And that comes back to the millage. It's being willing to invest in our children, in our employees, for making this a greater community. It's a better community because of this. And that's why, you know, Rick Mills, not Rick Mills, Wells, excuse me, you know, Rick Wells on this postcard said, you know, "Vote yes. Vote yes for a safer community, a better community." That's what it was about. I stand with Rick Wells, and this whole community should stand with Rick Wells when this comes up again. Because the state, you know, we hear, "Well, gee, Wells, you know, it's only temporary." Four years is four times more than the period that the legislature provides money. It's less temporary than what the state does. And our children, our community deserves to have at least four years of meeting, you know, the millage, this extra millage, like Sarasota does. And that's why Sarasota's been great, and that's what we imitated. And yeah, I'm gonna support it. I'm not looking forward to a doctorate in postal digging, but this community deserves all of our support in every way, you know, for our children. And I thank this board, you know, for doing everything it can, you know, to, you know, see that it gets passed, you know, in the near future, for our kids and for our community. And in conclusion, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to ramble on a little bit about the joy I've had in this role, and it's a great role. It's second to being, you know, a dad of kids, but it's a pretty darn good role. And to be able to, you know, play a role in making this district better, our community better, and that's a lot to be proud of. So thank you again. Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.